Okay, uh, someone make a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Thanks Sanders, second?
Second.
Say, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, council comments, who wants to start?
Start, well, we've been through a lot last week, the last two weeks with the flood and the recovery. And I would like to thank the town manager for the stand-up job he did with the leadership and everything. And getting everything organized and the town staff, they did a phenomenal job. The fire department, the police department, everybody pulled together and made a, a bad thing a little bit better. I know it was a lot, all the residents that came and worked at the distribution center. It, it was the biggest community feeling that I've had in a long time here.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody was equal, you know, everybody took care of each other. I saw neighbors helping neighbors, um, family checking on family. Nobody on cell phones too much when it worked. And a couple of things I would like to mention, um, I ran into a resident one day when they had enough people down here working. So when, when I wasn't here helping, I was out trying to help people in the community. Um, I ran into a gentleman who had been in his home for six days with no power and a huge tree on it. He was ninety-three years old. And I thought, okay, what can I do? So I went to the fire department and ran into Jason Livingston. And he said, I've got this board up here, it's got people on here, let's find somebody. He sent me to Pastor Billy at Calvary Chapel. And the help that he had there for the residents was phenomenal. He said, I've got a crew that can be there, because everybody was saying it was gonna take a crane to get that tree off this truck, this house. He had a crew show up that came up from Lake Norman. And I truly believe God sent them, because it was a human crane. They got down there, they cut that tree, they removed it. Um, Shannon had tarps here, I came to town hall and got a tarp. They tarped the house before they left and made sure everything was good. So if it did rain or something, you know, it didn't create more damage. But he was a little more out of the weather and elements. And he was a little safer with that tree off his house. Um, stuff like that just went on everywhere from what I saw. And I would like to thank everybody that helped anybody. Because that's what Mills River is, that's what we're about.
Anything else?
Um, I would like to mention the candidate forum this Sunday, the Come Listen to the Candidates. And it's gonna be at Mills River Community Building from two-thirty to four. So come listen to the candidates and see what they have to say. And see who we're gonna put in next to help.
What do we got? Who else?
I would like to, uh, echo Ms. Goode. Uh, I've heard lots and lots of very nice, high compliments about Matt and the fire department and the sheriff's department. Uh, I witnessed a few things from the fire department. They even came and, uh, got a couple guys who were stuck in the back of picking trucks down here out. And, yeah, guys do amazing work, uh, thank you very much. And I hope this is truly a once-in-a-five-hundred-year event.
Mm-hmm. Say?
And I'll echo, and I know the fire department's gonna present tonight to us, um, a little bit of, of what they did. But, um, I lived, you know, my side of it, you know, Jason was gone for, well, in the voice, um, a couple, three days, didn't see him, didn't hear from him. Um, so I know that they sacrificed or away from their families for, and their families were home without power and phones. And so, um, the volunteers and the paid staff, they give a lot and they don't always get acknowledged. And they're, the auxiliary kept things going at the station as well, they were cooking meals. Um, I was going to work, so I was gone all day, was not able to be here. A lot going on at funeral homes during a natural disaster too. Um, so, but I would come home and would be there and see them in the evenings a lot. And they had the auxiliary feeding the, the staff and the volunteers and families and community. And just some amazing things happened. Um, also a reminder, when we get to the Brown Ridge, I'm recusing myself from that, so I will be not on a log on this end of the table.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, we've been through a rough two or three weeks here. Uh, I can't praise the first responders enough. I know there's a handful of people out there beating us up and, uh, they'll just have to keep beating. But we, y'all did exactly what y'all are trained to do and went above and beyond in a lot of cases. Cause a lot of them people was warned to get out of them spots. But they elected to stay, and I get it, but you still had to go back and get some of them. And I know, so I praise you for every bit of that. Uh, the citizens, you know, we've been able to, we live in a great community, very little looting as far as I'm aware of. Uh, hadn't heard anything much, uh, it's terrible in other, other places in the region, but not here, thank God. And, uh, only thing I can say is our staff, my Lord. You know, nobody can train for this, not even first responders really, for this kind of event. You, you know it can happen, but you never dream of this happening. But these, they got thrown in headfirst into keeping this place up and going, keeping all this stuff going out. It was all hands on deck, and I tried to be here at least once a day, every day till this week. And I had to get back to some kind of normal procedure. But they handle it like champs, can't praise you enough. I wish there's some way I could repay you, we'll just know we think, think very well of each and every one of y'all. And we hope we don't have to do it again, but I know if we do next week, we're gonna have a tremendous bunch to jump in there and get it. And I love that thought. So let's go on with our meeting, let's get her going here. So, Steph reports, uh, town, uh, let's see, financial director, you wanna start us off?
Don't have a report tonight.
Thank you. All right, town clerk?
Um, just a reminder about your motion sheet, and when we get the public comment, you have a comment that was emailed in. Um, it's been sent around to each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, R. Lee?
I don't have an update, I'll have a report down on the regular agenda.
Now, you got anything to talk about parks or hicks?
We've been a little busy, um, one, I just really wanna thank community, as most of you probably know, Mills River Park in this site, um, was the distribution site. And I can't tell you how amazing it was to just see volunteers show up and say, what do you need? Um, it was truly amazing, at one point we had a hundred volunteers here that just showed up and said, how can I help? And I know that doesn't happen everywhere, and it does make Mills River special. Mills River has a staff of twelve people, and there is no way we could have helped as many people as we did without, I know a lot of you are in the audience, so I'm looking out into the audience, um, showing up every day. So, um, I'd just like to write, like, you all were victims too of this storm, and so a lot of us fared better than others. And the fact that you showed up and to help, um, was truly amazing. So, thank you all, um, that showed up to help over these last week and a half was really amazing. But what people really care about is how's the park doing? So I'm just gonna give you a rundown, um, overall, we fared better than a lot of folks, um, a lot of other parks in the community. So I'll just give you a quick rundown, so obviously our back walking trail took the brunt of the beating. Um, we do have a lot of debris, mud, sand, silt. Our riverbank restoration project held up, uh, very well, our bank did not blow out. Um, we're hopeful, once we kinda uncover the walking trail, that there's very minimal damage. Um, we can tell there's a little bit of structural damage to our, our fishing pier, but it looks mostly the wood and not any kind of foundation or anything like that. Um, but we'll get a, once we can get it cleaned up, we'll be able to take a much better look. But there doesn't seem to be any major structural, um, issues, which is really exciting. But just know the cleanup is going to take a, a good while back there. Um, our tennis courts, basketball courts, all, uh, fared ver- pretty well. Um, we have a little bit of additional cracking in the tennis courts around our poles, I think just from high wind, but structurally seems very sound. Um, and we shouldn't have much issues there. Um, our baseball field did flood, so we are gonna have to do some, uh, bit of work to our infield to get that back up and usable. Um, so I don't expect that we'll be able to get that up and usable before spring, but, um, we're working hard, um, for the, for the spring baseball season on that one. Um, our restrooms and shelters, they all flooded, we had a couple inches of mud. Um, but at this point, just the fact that they're cinder block buildings, we've been able to get those clean and sanitized. And, and, and they're in pretty good condition, and that goes for our shelters as well. Um, playgrounds structurally, everything held up, uh, very well. We did lose all our safety surfacing though, so that's something we're not gonna be able to open the playground until we can, uh, to replace that safety surfacing that, um, did wash away. Um, our dog park, and believe it or not, I know some of you are thinking, how did all that end up flooded? But literally everything but this building, you're in, the tennis courts and our maintenance building was underwater, um, on this site. Um, the dog park overall, um, is in pretty good condition. Uh, some of our fencing at the bottom did come loose, so that's gonna take, again, nothing structural, but it's just gonna take some time to resecure. So our dogs don't get out, and we'll have to replace some of our pea gravel that is washed. Um, but we're working, staff's working hard to get that up. Um, and then soccer fields overall, um, uh, no damage, but because they did flood and we did have floodwaters on them. We're waiting, um, for confirmation from the health department that we can let people play on them, because it did have that contaminated floodwater on them. Um, so that's kinda where we're at with everything, we're working really hard to be able to get, um, at least part of the park open as soon as we possibly can. So people can follow our social media and our website, and as soon as we can, uh, we know people want a place to play right now and need that place to exercise. And we are working, working as hard as we can to do it as quickly as we can. Um, other than that, so, um, obviously most of our programs have been canceled. We were able to resume tennis this week, thanks to West Henderson High School, they've let us use our tennis courts. So we were able to get that program back going, um, and we expect any of our other programs that take place in this building, um, to be able to resume next, um, next week, starting Monday. But people should just again, follow our social media, and if you're enrolled in one of those programs, you'll be in contact, we'll be in contact with you specifically. Um, so you want to have any questions about the condition? As I said, overall, I know that seems like a lot, but compared to a lot of other places, I think we, we fared fairly well. And it's gonna take a little bit, but we'll bounce back.
Um, Malachi, financial director?
Uh, continuing with some Helene impacts, um, I just wanted to mention two roads that are currently closed until further notice. Um, Old Fanning Bridge Road on the north part of the town, as you get towards Broadpoint Drive and the French Broad River, there is a portion of the road that has collapsed there. Um, I know there's already been an accident in that location, so please be very careful up there, uh, near Broadpoint Drive and Old Fanning Bridge. And the other road that, uh, remains closed until further notice is Brickyard Road at Boylston Creek. That bridge, uh, was partially damaged and washed out. Um, there's a good amount of signage up there, we actually, uh, put some additional signs up on Monday, cause some semi trucks were trying to cut through there and didn't see the signs till they got down. Um, but those are the two areas we're just asking citizens to be really careful of and find, uh, an appropriate detour around. Uh, separately, um, although staff was, uh, busy with the recovery last week, we did push out the rural rezoning, public notice early this week. So there were two signs on Boylston Highway, one is near the Brickyard Road area and one is just south of the Schoolhouse Road area. Um, so that is the posted notice for the large-scale town rezoning. And then we did get, uh, thousand and sixty-five letters out on Tuesday. So again, for anyone in that area, you'll be getting a letter from the town. Um, and then we have four legal ads as well, one ran two weeks ago, one ran last week. And then the big half-page ads, uh, will come the next two weeks.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right. Mr. Ma?
Good evening, council. Uh, as you know, on your agenda, the, uh, the first item that we'll be going over is the, the discussion on relief efforts in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. So a lot of my comments will be a part of that. But, uh, I would be remiss if I also didn't wanna, I didn't take a moment to thank, uh, this amazing staff for all of their hard work and effort over the last two weeks. It is hard to imagine that it has been two weeks, in fact, um, Thursday, two weeks ago. Uh, and the amount of work and professionalism that is in this, uh, that is on this staff, I would put it up against anyone else and any other staff. And I just wanna thank them for that, I wanna thank our partners, you're, you're gonna hear all of this again in just a few minutes. I wanna thank our partners for their work and their effort and their collaboration through this. And, uh, the volunteers and the partner organizations that have been a part of this to make, meeting the Mills River community need was a true effort of national, regional, and local partners to make it happen. And like I said, I will go into more detail about it. But, uh, the amount of positive impact that we were able to make within this community is something that I, I think we should all be very proud of. I know that there are still people struggling, we will continue to work to meet their need every day until they are back whole. But if there is a silver lining and a positive note, it is the work that has been done, uh, at this location for this community, uh, and the community around us. And so I just wanna praise them, thank them for all of that. I wanna thank you all, I wanna thank you for your work and your efforts. I wanna thank you for, uh, also entrusting me during this time to, uh, to make sure that we did the best that we could in order to meet that need head-on. So, uh, I'll hold off on my other comments, I'll go into specifics again in, uh, the regular agenda, but I just wanna say thank you.
Okay, uh, we're down to the public comments section, uh, Jenny Sealy?
Hey, everybody, my name is Jenny Sealy, um, I live off of Clara's Trail, um, I'm gonna try to make this quick, thank y'all for what you have done. It is monumental, not letting you forget, um, it's exactly who I thought we were. Um, for Old Fanning Bridge Road, can we move, um, the road closed signs, um, closer to, uh, Broadpoint Drive and out to the Riveter? There's a lot of people that are coming down and going over the bridge and then trying to get past. So if we could move those out a little bit more, so that, I even seen people go past the signs today and drive up to where the, the washout is. So if we could expand that a little bit more, that would be awesome. Um, one thing I did, uh, notice that we had trouble communicating with us, ourselves, uh, because of course there's cell phones and internet and all that nice jazz, but that all went down. Um, is there any way that we could have like a station that's just Mills River? That's an emergency station that we could all listen to on our emergency like little things that could update us? Um, maybe possibly for the future? Um, also, uh, let's see here, um, development, even, even in the, uh, release to tell us to evac- evacuate, they were talking about the runoff from development making this so much worse. Um, the reality is, you know, we have global warming, which is all of us, and then we have overdevelopment and, which is the whole region. Um, we've now carved substantial, uh, passageways for river or for, uh, more flooding and more erosion. Um, I would hope that we would decline any kind of development for foreseeable times, so that we know, um, what these events, even get a, a couple more storms in to see what our real flooding is like now, because this changes everything. Um, and I would like us to keep as much as we could. So, um, I would ask for a moratorium, I don't know if that's within our power, but, um, if we could slow down the development as much as we can, um, so that we can really assess, um, you know, how, what these impacts are on us. So, um, again, thank y'all, thank y'all for showing up, this is exactly what my country is and my town, so.
All right, thank you, uh, next, Buster Brown?
Thank you.
How are you?
I wanna read what everybody said, uh, and we go through this, we see what America's about. And not only Mills River, but Asheville and everywhere. Uh, and, and I just think that's what makes us proud. I didn't expect to be here, two days ago, I was in Charlotte having two stents put in. And I'm not here to say that to get your empathy, I'm here to fight for our land. This piece of property has been in our, our, uh, family for sixty years, four generations. We have a choice now. And I wanna invite every one of you and anybody here to go look at that piece of land. In my estimation, it's the most beautiful piece of land in Mills River, it is gorgeous. We have a choice of going with light industry and putting another Amazon in there with a huge two-hundred thousand square foot building and parking for another hundred fifty, two-hundred vans. I've heard the argument, we don't want a bunch of cars, what, would you rather vans? We want homes for working-class people that is affordable. I build in Asheville. And I'm telling you, it's hard to find and to build a home that's available for the average person. These folks wanna build an apartment, a townhome, condominium, home place that people can afford. They wanna develop maybe at a seventy-five acres, approximately thirty, thirty-five cleared and developed. If we put warehouses, we're gonna take a lot more of that land, we're gonna flatten it, you're gonna lose a lot of trees. That's a, do you want, do we, we don't want, we would rather build for people, not packages. For cars and families and kids. This is what the, I own it with twenty siblings, not siblings, but, uh, four siblings and kids. So I'm here fighting for our land and our rights. I mean, we don't want, we want a place for retirees, we want a place for working-class men and women for kids that can ra- walk trails. I mean, I've heard all the arguments about it, and, and all due respect to the runoff. You build stormwater retention and we're next to a river and it goes into the river cleaner, you can't build a better place to do that. Um, so, you know, we wanna have a place where people come to support our churches, support our businesses, support our beautiful parks. Um, so I mean, I can go on, and I can, we can, I can go on over the debates of why not do this, you know, a forty-five-foot height that's compared to fifty for a warehouse. It would do us great, I think it'd be a great disservice to flatten that whole piece of land and put another big warehouse. I think it would do Mills River a disservice.
Hey, can I, can I do you a favor, can I stop you right there?
Sure.
And I know there's gonna be a presentation for it here in a little bit.
Right.
And I would welcome you back up to, to further us along in that, would that be okay?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, but I'm three days from this, I was going home.
Okay.
And, and I just, I know, I don't know if you're gonna be doing any voting or whatever, I'll, I'll come back.
Not today.
Okay.
Which is just presentation only today.
Right.
But since you are just, if you just got a little bit longer, let's go ahead.
Almost finished.
Let's finish it up, so you can get home, since you're just two days from getting stents, yes.
I, I, cause I'll start repeating myself, cause I, and I'll start beating this drum harder, but I wanna leave y'all with the invitation to take a look at that piece of land and see if you don't agree with me, that it, we're, we're better to have families and kids and people using that land, walking trails than a huge, forgive me for saying it, damn warehouse.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next on my list, Jim Foster?
Well, I'm Jim Foster, and all of y'all know that. Uh, I just wanna make this real brief as I can. I heard what Mr. Brown said, and we have spent on the planning board three meetings, about five or six hours, a lot of things have been discussed. And the planning board, of course, has a recommendation on, before you to not do this. I just don't think it's a fit for what we need in Mills River, certainly will not be affordable housing for our workforce. So I know you're not gonna probably vote tonight, but we need to go back to the planning board, send it back, we'll discuss it some more. But I'd ask you to, this is a, a big deal, this, this, uh, conditional zoning we're talking about, it's a big deal. And this particular property does not have, uh, by right at the present. But if we open up the floodgates, we will regret it, I think, thank you.
Oh, Jeff Moore?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I'm Jeff Moore, I live on Schoolhouse Road. And tonight I just wanna echo what people are saying about how proud I am of Mills River and the way that our communities come together. Like to give a shout-out to Ingles, we, uh, were waiting in line to go in and pay cash for some groceries. And, uh, they brought cookies out and water and, um, they just seemed to be going above and beyond. And, you know, Circle K had gas, and, uh, they were out there directing people and, and making that run smoothly. And Big Mike's providing food and Jerry out there cooking with them, and, you know, that just, that just makes me proud. Uh, the fire department are heroes, sheriff's department heroes out there doing their thing. And, uh, I'd like to shout out for the NCDOT. Uh, I've had the, the privilege of doing a little consulting with them this week and, you know, running some errands and seeing how they're working. They're doing the, they're doing sixteen-hour shifts and longer, and they have people sleeping on the floor, cause they can't get to their house. And, um, you know, I, I've been very blessed to serve with the NCDOT for a number of years. And, um, you know, this is the time when they really show their, their worth to our community as our friends and neighbors. And, you know, one of the things that, uh, was, I always thought was neat, when we were DOT and we were going out clearing roads, fire department beat us to a lot of them. They're out there getting it open for one lane, we would come out and getting it, get it open a little wider. So now it's that teamwork and, and the community, so thanks to everyone and, you know, thanks to the DOT and for what they do. Thanks to y'all.
Okay, that's all I have on my list, anyone else here? Come on up, give us your name and a citizen's kind of an idea where you live, Mr. Britton?
Hey. My name's Joe Britton, and I live on Old Turnpike Road, I'm sixth-generation person living in Mills River. And once again, I wanna repeat everything and thank all the people that helped out, that got the roads open, got the power on, got the phone on. Uh, they went, you know, to me, they went, just, this is amazing, we've gone so far this quick. I also wanna tell everybody, the Mills River Farm Market was open last week. We have lost, not lost the farmers, but we have quite a few farmers have lost their crop, we still have some coming in. We're gonna be open for the next, till the end of October, so please come and support the local farmers and support the market. It was a very good market, it wasn't so much, a lot of people said they were there for the fresh food, a lot of people were there for the camaraderie. One of the council members was there, and I appreciate her showing up. And it was just amazing how people were glad to be in a community that has done so well and cares about everybody. So just, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Hear nobody? All right, uh, approval of the consent agenda, by motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Shay, second?
Second.
Sandra, any more discussion on that consent agenda? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hear none? All right, regular agenda. All right, the discussion on the relief efforts.
Jim, you have to, you have to sit with me. I feel well protected. All right, so I'm going to drive, I'm going to drive this train here.
Okay.
But one thing that I thought and what we all thought, we got together and talked about the best way to provide an update for you and and we all agree that the best way to do that was to get together and show not just the true collaborative effort that happened over the last two weeks, but also to be able to provide this collaborative presentation for you all. So you're going to see some repeats within here. But I will tell you, a lot of this information bears repeating for our community. And before I get started, I just want to thank the two gentlemen sitting to my left here and their staffs and the people behind them. It was, it was truly an experience that again, hopefully, hopefully we won't have to experience for quite a long while, if ever again. But I'm very thankful for both of you all. So looking at this, we broke it down to a couple of different areas. Looking at the town of Mills River, first of all, looking at our pre-event planning and logistics. And so we really started talking about this at the town level. You're going to hear us talk through from the town perspective and then with our partners over here on from their perspectives as well. But really, starting on Tuesday, we began receiving multiple updates and briefings regarding the storm impact. And in fact, that continues to go on to this day, both from the county as well as from the National Weather Service, the state, et cetera. On Wednesday, the town staff launched the emergency alert system on our website and implemented a social media strategy to make sure that we had a multi-pronged approach to be able to communicate with our residents as much as possible. We also made sure that we finalized any park and facility preparations, that included making sure that items were up, that things were secured and in the best position possible for damage control. Now, Thursday, September twenty-sixth, as the area started to rapidly deteriorate, deteriorate prior to Helene actually getting here, it's that pre rainfall that was, that was starting to flood the area. I made the call to close town hall in Mills River Park for the safety of staff and also for the safety of the community trying to get here. There have been questions about our communication strategy, so I think it's helpful for us to talk through what that looked like. As I mentioned, it was a two-pronged approach. We did lift up the emergency preparedness banner across the top, as many of you all may have seen. And then we also mirrored those posts, we mirrored posts on social media and the website to make sure there was consistency in communication. Because the one thing we want to ensure is that our communication strategy is consistent to where there's not ambiguity between items that we think are deemed necessary for the public. And then we also knew that there was a potential for power outages and other outages. We, I will say that had, but just for myself, I did not expect the widespread communication outage that we did. And if somebody did expect the widespread communication outage that we had, then you should have played the lottery. But because of that, what we actually did, we had three staff members in a hierarchy in order based off of our access. And that actually ended up being quite successful for us because one of, one of our staff members that was able to leave and go to the central part of the state was actually the one that was communicating with our public from central North Carolina, both with, but given prior direction from myself and from staff to make sure that we continued to communicate with the people that were able to get access to it. And then, as you can see, we also coordinated because we knew information was coming into info@millersriver.org, both from inside the community, but also from people outside the community wanting to try to find information out about those residents, community members, family members, et cetera, within the community. And so during the, during the outage here within Mills River, we actually had staff working and responding as much in real time as possible to those concerns and issues. And as you can see at the bottom here, and that's why we're sitting here as well, throughout this process, we also worked, I myself worked with Chief Burnett and Sergeant Player throughout this multiple contacts a day, both in person and on the phone when we were able to. And then actually received, created a strategy when the communications went out to make sure that we were trying, making sure that communication was at least in person as much as possible. If you all have any questions while I go through this, please let me know. Chief?
Good evening, Scott Burnett, Fire Chief, Mills River Fire Department. So just related specific to the Fire Department's preparation. As Mr. McCarron stated, there was strong coordination with the town of Mills River. That, that started well before the storm. Mr. McCarron and I both arrived in our roles here in Mills River about the same time and so we started a strong relationship then and have been meeting regularly, which lent itself well to preparation for this storm. Those lines of communication were already established, that relationship was already established and that allowed for strong coordination with the town of Mills River. We also had strong coordination before the storm with Henderson County. That is a continuous process that we work with Henderson County Emergency Management. We work with the Henderson County Sheriff's Department through Sergeant Player. And that, that coordination was occurring even stronger the week before the storm hit, making sure that we had resources already here in Mills River, knowing that this was going to be an event that no one had ever experienced. So we were able to redeploy resources to assist the Mills River Fire Department, actually in our station before the storm even arrived. We had our firefighters survey rivers and creeks, just to try to identify, and this is a coordinated effort throughout the entire county, just to try to make sure that any areas that had debris flow or debris piles, log jams could be cleared so that flooding would not be worse than it possibly could. We created a staffing plan. I'm not be more proud your fire department, your community's fire department stepped up. We, we had our members sign up in advance of the storm to staff our fire station. At one time, we had over thirty volunteers working out our fire stations to make sure that the community was protected and could not be more proud and as was stated multiple times before, it truly, this is Mills River and this is, this is what our community does. And it was amazing to see our fire department, our volunteers step up as they did. As I said earlier, the state resources were mobilized. That was a tremendous help to already have those resources when the storm hit very early Friday morning. We already had resources from around the state that were in pointing to calls as early as four AM Friday mornings.
Sergeant Player?
Sergeant Player.
Yes, sir. I'm going to do pass the mic a little bit.
So I want to reiterate, the partnership here was stronger than I've probably seen it in a long time. We've said it time and time again, the Sheriff's Office and Mills River Fire Department have become even greater partners in the six years that I've been here, been lucky enough to be here and stationed here. So we had our emergency management briefing, identified some needs that we needed to take care of. Fire Department took care of theirs. I spent the day Thursday traveling Boston Creek and parts of South Mills River with some of my staff, encouraging people to voluntarily evacuate. Some chose to, some chose not to. Some of those folks reached out after, after being told that if they didn't leave, we may not be able to get to them, and that was the case in many instances. I think we're truly blessed that we didn't have more casualty, I mean, no casualty and that the injuries were fairly low. Considering, one of the biggest issues we had from the Sheriff's Office standpoint and the county standpoint was the communication system. I'm standing in the middle of Highway two eighty with two and a half feet of water, running across two eighty between Ingles and Valley Ag. Fire Department did a rescue or two there and we made the determination to use Fire Department, our personnel to shut two eighty down. To the displeasure of a lot of motorists. We did that. Most of those motorists, I'll just tell you, were interested in going to places like Culvers and stuff and getting something to eat and that's why they were out. And so, once we got mobilized there, we were able to turn people around and send them back home and ask them to stay there until till we could assess the road damage that was in the area. The nine-one-one center while I was standing in the middle of two eighty went completely black for the entire county and the entire region. A lot of factors involved with that, which we have an emergency operations plan to overcome that. But that's not something you can just flip a switch and do. So it took us several hours to get that in place where communications was redirected to other counties away from us and then through satellite radios and things like that, that communication came back in. And then we were able to have communication, so.
So with the impact, as we move forward, I would just say that as you all might, may very well be aware, during the, the impact of the storm, while many of us were ensuring that we were safe, our families were safe as much as possible. Gentlemen to my left and the staff and the dedicated personnel behind them were, were answering the call. And so I just want to make sure that we also highlight that work here as well. So Chief?
Thank you. So and all the people who are rescued from floodwaters here in Mills River. The picture there is, is some of the state resources that were pre-staged in those rivers that helped us. They were tremendous as they were doing water rescues at the same time that Mills River firefighters were doing water rescues in other areas of our towns. We evacuated twenty-five people from their homes. In the first four hours, there were fifty-one nine-one-one calls from people that were stating they, they had emergencies and needed, needed emergency help. And without those dedicated volunteers that stepped up to come to the station the night before and without their state resources that were there before, we would not have been able to answer all of those nine-one-one calls. On top of that, we had over a hundred calls for trees and power lines down. Folks either couldn't get access to them or access out of, out of their homes. And so it was certainly a very busy, especially the first forty-eight hours. We had challenges. Our whole community had challenges. Access was one of the biggest challenges. As Sergeant Player already stated, infrastructure, our communication, that, that's a big stuff. Never before has public safety in western North Carolina experienced cellular phone outage like we did sustained for thirty-six hours. Their communication was largely face-to-face. To Mr. McCarron's credit, he, when he and I were no longer able to talk on the phone, he came to the firehouse and that's how we dealt all of our communications was face-to-face. But with, with the infrastructure, the power lines that were down, across the road, the hanging power lines, a very dangerous situation for all of our responders to be trying to access areas with low-hanging power lines, with trees that were still falling, roads that had washed away. So those were, those were our biggest challenges.
And so, just to recap some of the issues that we dealt with during, during this whole event. Initially, I was by myself. Folks were trying to get to us, communication was down. Right before it went down, I was told, do what you need to do, utilize who you need to utilize. And that's what we did. Later on in the day, Friday, Haywood Road finally became passable enough to get some of my staff back in Mills River. During the entire period, we worked with the Fire Department to do health and welfare checks that came into the area. We had four arrests that were made during that time period, one for driving while impaired, one for discharging a firearm in a dwelling, one for domestic violence assault on a female, and one larceny. We did have some breaking and enterings in our community, or at least called. We had one at Ingles, which ended up being staff trying to get into the building and people saw him in plain clothes because that's, they came however they were. And I got Ingles up and running to the point they could serve the community. Our biggest victim in that was a landing depot down on, off of Butler Bridge Road. The night after the storm, someone broke in and, and took quite a bit of merchandise from there where that's currently under investigation by our Criminal Investigations Division. We had a residential break-in in the Glens of Aberdeen. The, one of the stores in the mall there at GB Gas, the hemp store, somebody thought they broke in, but I think it ended up being just wind blew the doors open there. We had one reported vehicle theft that was actually determined to be unauthorized used by family members that came and took that vehicle. But we did have one vehicle reported stolen off of Woodscape Drive that we're still in the process of looking for and trying to identify. We did numerous rides from Mills, to and from Mills River from businesses, a lot of security checks. I've spent the better part of my week with, with Matt's help, communicating with all of our business partners in the town, the banks. I spoke to their staff daily to find out when they were going to open and to what level they were going to open. I met with James Daly or spoke with James Daly at Ingles to make sure his security needs were met. The staff at Ace Hardware to make sure what their hours were going to be and to make sure they were good. Did continual check-ins on the gas situation within Mills River and kept a town manager updated on what was open, what was not open, so that we could try and push some of that information out. Circle K finally opened, got a generator hardwired to the back, poured fresh gas in within about an hour and a half. It quit running, went back there and it appeared somebody siphoned the gas out of the generator from behind the store while they were out trying to help the community get back on their feet. So
Wow.
Those are the kinds of things. We, a lot of suspicious person calls. We did have one lady dropped off at the Fire Department that Calvary Church, Pastor Billy up there helped us locate to a shelter in Arden. Her family then called looking for her. We were able to reunite them and solve that one missing persons case. So it's been an ongoing effort, an ongoing, I've got some fabulous people that have been working. Our Mills River officers stepped up and have done a great job. I do have my replacement, as I'm retiring in December, who spent last week with me here working, which I'll bring him around and introduce him, but Sergeant Chris Heatherly, he stepped right up and hit the ground running and he's got a Fire Department background like I do. And so I spent some of my days working Sheriff's Office, some of my nights supplementing at Fire Department. And I was finally able to get home to my house Sunday night to check on my family, who I had not been able to get a hold of since the storm came through. So I want to give our staff and the Fire Department staff and everybody a huge applause, round of applause.
Gotcha.
So looking at what happened in the aftermath of it, I think that, I know the council, many of you all obviously know this from the updates, but also I want our community to know that, just general facts, as you've said, you know, working with our key partners over here, making sure that we continue to find communication during blackout period. And so there was never a, a long period of time. We always found a way in order to communicate to make sure that the needs were being met within the community as best as possible. As I mentioned earlier, we did have a staff member out of region that was able to communicate for the, for the town to both relay, relay that information, but then also to relay concerns as much as possible from concerned people looking about, trying to find information out about what's going on within Mills River. The county municipal managers, so we, my and myself and then and my counterparts across the county met daily during this event and, and sometimes multiple times a day to make sure that we were coordinating our efforts with the county EOC at all times. And then, and then whatever information we were able to share with the community at large, we made sure that we were speaking with one voice as much as possible to make sure that there was consistency between municipalities and across the county. Municipal mayors and the county chairperson also were debriefed in person at the EOC in the days after, in the days following the event to make sure that our elected officials and elected heads were in a position to be able to share information, also to be able to ask questions and share concerns with the EOC staff. And then, just another item, you may have seen this on our social media and in our webpage, on our webpage. But the town also joined Henderson County's deep debris management contract. And for that reason, we're streamlining debris pickup for our community. And so that, those trucks have started to roll out and more information can be found on our website, as well as on the Henderson County website. And so it is a little out of order now, so I apologize for that, but I'll also just mention that as many of you have talked about. That as many of you have talked about, we did have a resource hub here at Town Hall. I believe that it was the first resource hub opened in the county. I have not yet been able, uh, to find anyone to prove otherwise. Uh, we opened, uh, a, a skeleton crew of us were able to get here Saturday morning. The call came out to, uh, where we could find a resource hub and we said, we can do it right here at the town, at Town Hall in the town park. And so we opened starting at noon on, uh, Saturday, September twenty-eighth. And today, uh, well, today was the last day for the resource hub located here at Town Hall. Um, as the days have continued, a good sign was that there were a lot, there was less need coming through. There were less cars and less people in need coming through. That is not to say that our job is over. We still have much work to do. Uh, but in doing so, that is going to be consolidated at the, uh, at the distribution hub in Flat Rock at one eighteen McAbby Port. And so you'll see that information coming up a little bit more as well. But.
Take this moment just to highlight the coordination. I was very proud of our, our town, our, our fire department. County, state, the, early on, as I had stated, the, um, coordination was, was strong and, and there, there's an incident action plan. Uh, for every operational period, we started before the storm hit that the county led and the county coordinated all of their, uh, efforts of all of the public safety. And different groups throughout the county. And so, uh, we had, uh, briefings multiple times a day with Henderson County. Um, every morning we would have an operational briefing at, uh, the fire department here in Mills River. Uh, Mr. McCarron would attend those, Sergeant Player would attend those, and they'll kind of have patrol, uh, department of transportation. Just to make sure that there was solid coordination, that efforts were not being duplicated, that everything was being done in a safe and operation. As possible, following that, that countywide incident action plan.
And so one of the coordinations that we put in place very early on, Friday, everybody was in a stir. Saturday, everybody was looking for information. Um, I had let my house moved into the fire department. Cause I didn't know what Mills River gets like when it floods, but never would I have thought it would have been like it was. Um, and the need arose pretty quickly that we needed to set up security around the fire department because we were finding people trying to gain entry into the fire department. To get information and answers rightly so. And so Chief and I talked and some of the command staff talked with the fire department. And myself and one highway patrolman established a security presence out front of the firehouse for the entire day. And it was nice because highway patrol had road information that was coming in on his radio. So he and I shared information, we're able to, the folks that came walking up, had a lot of Airbnb people. In this community that were trying to get, get out of here. And every time they turned down a road, it was flooded and it was blocked off and same issue I had trying to get home. And so we were, we were able to, uh, communicate and work together to get that information out while providing a security presence for the fire department on Saturday until. Things calmed down and, and everything got put in place.
So, uh, jumping back over to the resource hub real quick, uh, just because, as I mentioned, there was a little bit of, out of order there. Uh, I think it's important for us to acknowledge what has happened here in the last two weeks. And again, with the coordination here, uh, with the two gentlemen and, and their staffs beside us. As I mentioned earlier, it was a true partnership and we'll get to that in a minute. But by the numbers through yesterday, over twelve thousand persons were served. Right off front of us. People in need, people asking for help and us in our community. And when I say us, I mean, all the partners coming together to make it happen. Number of vehicles were over three thousand. I think the final number I actually have on my phone right there, they actually closed at the beginning of, uh, uh, right at the beginning of our council meeting. I think it's going to be about thirty-five hundred vehicles, about twen- uh, twelve thousand five hundred persons. Thousands of hot meals, meals ready to eat, bottles of water and miscellaneous supplies were served here. Many of them were served by the people that were in this room and people that'll be listening to this. And I, I'll tell you right now, I, uh, I don't quite know how we're going to thank all of them, uh, but we are, we're going to find a way to thank every, each and every one of them that we can. We also started providing hot showers. They were operational on Wednesday, October second through Thursday, October tenth. And, uh, a, a hot shower goes a long way in a situation like this. This is a list of our key partners. I know that I have missed some and I apologize to those that I've missed, but it's worth me reading each and one out loud. Henderson County Government, Henderson County Sheriff's Office, Mills River Fire and Rescue, North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement. North Carolina License and Theft Bureau, providing security for us each day and each night. American Red Cross, providing food and services here, the hot foods that were provided, as well as the National Guard bringing in hot food. The North Carolina Department of Adult Correction, again, helping us with our security. Fletcher Academy and Two Serve, uh, are, uh, were also helping to lead outside, include, uh, as well as with our volunteers and with our staff. So point of privilege, I'm going to say it as much as I want to and you're going to get tired of me saying it, but to the council, to this incredibly dedicated staff. To the countless volunteers and community members that showed up each and every day, when you put your own lives on hold to show up here to help those in need. And to each and every partner that showed up and said, how can I help? Personally, I want to say thank you. From the town of Mills River, I want to say thank you.
Similarly, I, I, I really want to take this opportunity to thank our community for the response that our community had. No, no fire department has the staff or the resources to take care of a community after a mountain hurricane. Those don't happen. It did happen. It happened to our mountain community. Had it not been for our community's response, as horrible as this event was, it would be so much worse. The, the town, including our town council, our churches, our businesses, our community members, they, they showed up. And it was incredible to see and it made a huge difference. Our, our churches opened their, their doors to, to help people and to, to help provide supplies. And Mr. McCarron has talked about, um, how much of a leader the town of Mills River was and helping our community. Our, our business from, from, uh, the, the large corporation of Ingles, all the way down to the Big Mike's barbecue. You know, stepped up and, and took care of our, our community and everybody in between. Our community members in, in the middle of, of a hurricane, a mountain hurricane that was coming through, they, they took their own tractors. They took their own ATVs, their own side-by-sides, their own chainsaws and provided access to their neighbors. And that's what Mills River is and that's what Mills River did and Mills River showed up and it's incredible that our community was able to come together. And help each other to prevent loss of life and further destruction like it did. So thank you to our community.
No, I just, I mean, I, I, I do want to, I don't think there was a church I didn't go to in the community. By the middle of the week, they didn't have some sort of table, some sort of resource set up, helping people in the community and people outside of community. There were people that didn't have what we had in other areas. Uh, two eighty, bless their hearts, the Bavard people flooded two eighty down by your house. Um, I went around the curve and I thought, where did I come from? Two eighty was lined on both sides and it was simply people trying to get a cell signal. Uh, desperate to call out to family members to let them know they were okay. Um, bless their hearts, we had a group of teenagers sitting in the middle of the turn lane in front of your house with traffic whizzing by on both sides. That removed over. Um, but from the first drop, when the last drop of rain hit the ground, I saw farmers. I saw contractors. I saw homeowners. Um, I went into some communities early in the morning. There were ten and twenty people from the community walking lot to lot. Helping their neighbors cut trees off their houses and out of their yards. Went back through that night about seven o'clock before I went home, most of those communities had brought single burners to a circle in the middle of the road. With one pot of food and had their own little mini buffet set out in the road. And what I saw time and time again was neighbors helping neighbors and neighbors meeting. I couldn't tell you how many times I heard this from the residential areas. So-and-so's lived here for three years and I never knew him, but I know him now.
Exactly.
And that's the resilience of this community. That's the resilience of putting these away a little bit.
Oh, you ought to be the mayor out. And you get them cut out and they say, who are you again? I said, you ain't going to believe this, but I am the mayor. They said, they ain't no way. Ain't you got something else to do? Yeah, but I go check on him about every three hours. We got a plan. I can't talk to him by phone, so we go, I go see him.
And I, you know, I, I, I won't name individual churches, cause I will miss one.
Yes.
Community partners from out of state, churches brought in people from Kentucky. Um, I know a truckload of Amish folks that know some of our families up south Mills. Rode south Mills with a flatbed load of generators, chainsaws and gas handing that out for free to people that didn't have it. And so, you know, yes, it's people in the community, but it's people that knew very little, if any people here. But chose to put down what they were doing and come here and help. That speaks volumes.
So now, uh, I'll speak, uh, briefly about the, uh, uh, the next steps, what we call the, the recovery or human resource phase. Uh, of this. And again, we're going to speak from our, our own perspectives on this one as well, but the. If, if, if I, if it doesn't go that fast. All right, there we go. All right. So town staff, uh, as, uh, the Parks and Rec Director Nicole mentioned earlier, town staff are currently assessing park damage. Here's some of the images that you can see, uh, on the back path there of the damage that we are going to be working through. Um, I thought this one image here shows where the debris is on top of the, uh, uh, on top of the, uh, pavilion area right out there. And, and the sign area there. So just to let you know, there's going to be a lot of work that's going to be continuing, especially on that back in that meadow area. But we are putting a plan together, we, and we are implementing that plan. Uh, to make sure we open up as soon as possible because we know how much this park means to this community. And we are going to roll it out and open it up as soon as it is safe to do so. Uh, there have been a lot of questions about storm debris removal. So some key takeaways, as I mentioned earlier. Henderson County will provide free curbside storm debris removal to Mills River residents. We are pushing out information on what that needs to look like on your curbside. But that will be going out in the next couple of days. I, I asked, uh, the county how long we have and they said, as long as it takes. And so, uh, we're going to continue working through that. As you can see, that contracted service will pick up DOT municipal and private roads. Debris must be in the right of way. And the, and I'll show you that guideline in a minute, but again, we'll be able to, we, we posted it online, we posted it on our, and we'll have printout if people need them, et cetera, to make sure that it's set up correctly. Residents may also drop off at the transfer station. Those fees are waived, uh, for Henderson County residents. They are not waived for businesses. At least the last time I saw it, but for residences, they are. And so for more information, I'm just going to ask that you visit HendersonCountyNC.gov. All of that information and more is currently available on there. But to give you an idea, this is what the storm debris removal looks like. You will be able to find this, uh, again, on our, uh, through our social media and through Henderson County NC's website. Uh, as well as again through FEMA as well. And we'll talk about that in just a second. There have been questions from our community about FEMA. And so FEMA, I will say, uh, first and foremost, uh, many of the MREs and the products that we got, starting in the first couple of days, were from FEMA. We also received, uh, uh, that they are currently in our area. There are teams of FEMA representatives that are in our area right now knocking on doors. If you ask me how I know, a person called me today and said, hey, do you know about this FEMA, uh, representative at my front door? And I provided the same information. Representatives could be identified by a red stripe on their badge and a holographic image. And said, if that's the case, then they're there to help. They're there to help and assist any, uh, any resident with the application process to ensure that they. Uh, that it, uh, items that are necessary are documented and that they can begin the process right there when they come and visit you. If you have more information about that, or if you want more information or to start the process yourself though, you can see on the screen, disasterassistance.gov. Is also an area that our residents can go for further information. And as I mentioned, to start that process. But if you see a FEMA representative, they are there, they are, uh, they are tasked with helping you with your disaster recovery.
So what we have continued to do even as, as, uh, today is do health and welfare checks. So there were, once the, uh, nine one one calls, um, slowed, we had a lot of people from outside of our community that were calling in through a lot of different channels. Uh, to, to check on their loved ones, their family. And so, uh, the fire department did a, a lot of that over the past week, as well as the sheriff's department. Uh, we, early on, we, we did access assessments to find out what roads did not have access in our community. What, what can we do, uh, working with our partners to get access? Uh, we also did damage assessments coordinated with the county to find out, you know, what areas were, were damaged heavily so that those resources that could help guide FEMA into those locations. And when the communications weren't working, we, we did outreach. We sent our crews out in areas with, uh, information, with flyers that they were able to hand out. Since, uh, cell phones, internet, none of that was working. We were, um, had the desire to get, uh, information to people. In their hand and written form as much as possible. And this, this was powerful for, for our folks because. When, when we were able to put that piece of paper in their hand and, and included in that piece of paper was that the town of Mills River was a, a resource hub for the community. Just the relief that we saw in people's eyes, uh, the tears that started flowing, that, that they were going to get relieved from the town of Mills River. And up until that point in time, they had no contact, no, no cell phone, no internet. They, uh, very little information, as, as all of us were in that same situation. So, uh, that, that effort of getting that information and letting people know there, hey, there's somewhere you can go to get food, to get water. That was, was very powerful with that outreach.
So we continue to still have partners from outside the county, outside the state that are working with our patrol officers. Uh, we were able to have enough resources come in or we had an additional officer from outside of the jurisdiction ride with our own officers. So we were able to man cars with two people, um, do those patrols. We continue. Uh, we still have areas that are not livable, that we're still patrolling, um, trying to do three and four roll-throughs those neighborhoods. Uh, what I can say is neighbors are watching neighbors and so people are watching other people's property. Um, and keep in touch with our businesses, check on our businesses, make sure as we move forward, their security needs or security interests. Uh, again, the health and welfare checks that we're doing, um, and then just continue with day-to-day business and answering the calls that are coming in now that. Systems are back up and people are able to communicate needs that they have.
So a couple of items just, uh, for, uh, for our community to, uh, reference and we're going to make, again, make sure that this is posted for them to see as well. But that information up there for Mills River is our emergency page that will continue to keep open through the decl- uh, emergency declaration. Uh, the Henderson County website up there is all for their emergency page where you can get information on donations, volunteering. Uh, uh, resource needs as well as other information, again, dealing with storm debris and other issues that, uh, that are becoming. And we will continue to push that information through our social media and website as well to make sure there's consistency across all communication streams. Applying for disaster relief, as we talked about, disasterassistance.gov. We, I don't want to gloss over this next one. Everyone has a story to tell over this event. Everybody copes with it in a different way. And so while many of us and, and, and many out there continue to deal with the aftermath of this storm and what it mean. And what it means for their lives, we have to make sure that we watch and, and we help to make sure that they take care of their mental health. And so, uh, this is one of the resources that Henderson County has pushed out, uh, speaking about behavioral health and recovery. And I encourage anyone who believes that they need to reach out, uh, to visit that and visit other helpful links that are available for them. FEMA.gov, again, uh, I. FEMA.gov, again, uh, I put both FEMA.gov on here as well as the FEMA rumor response. I do, uh, pages, they're vitally important. There's a lot of misinformation out there in any type of crisis and in any type of event. Uh, sometimes in the lack of information and lack of communication, but then also too much communication when it comes to, uh, uh, misinformation, misleading others. And so I highly encourage, uh, our residences, our residents and others to make sure that they continue to utilize the local, state and national resources that are available for them to help make them whole during this situation. And if you have a question about that, to visit the rumor response pays, page, to ask that question, is this real or is this not? And that'll help to dispel those concerns within our community. As you can see, uh, we are here to answer any questions that you have. Uh, and, uh, and again, I just want to say thank you both for being here and, uh, thank you for all that you've done and all that you will continue to do and for your staffs. Uh, we, uh, this was, uh, was not an experience that we wanted to go through, but having to go through it with the dedicated and professional people beside us and behind them. Uh, made it, uh, uh, made sure that we were in the best position possible to be successful. So, thank you, thank you.
So early on, say Friday morning, when y'all got them early calls to go out, did, did y'all experience any instances where y'all got apparatuses trapped, like getting somebody out and then trees blow across the road and have to cut your way out or anything like that?
Apparatus, no. Uh, fire department, personal vehicles, yes.
Okay.
One big issue that we had was, uh, responders getting to the station. And fortunately, since we had those state resources there, fortunately, since we had so many volunteers that had staffed our station the night before, we were able to respond to a lot of calls. But it was very difficult for a lot of our personnel to move around. Um, neighborhoods were isolated, we all experienced that. And so fortunately, since, um, our model is a volunteer model where we have volunteers in most of our neighborhoods and most of our communities within Mills River. Uh, they, they were the responder for, for that area.
Okay.
Because they, they, but, um, uh, having, having apparatus trapped, uh, some other, uh, departments within the county did have that, but they were their firefighters that were, uh, in, in their apparatus for several hours having to uh, weather the storm and fire apparatus to that. Trees continued to come down the power lines and it was a big, a big issue as far as getting in and out.
Okay. Anybody, anything else? I know I never thought I would, I'd ever said it, but, uh, early on Friday evening, Saturday morning, when people was trying to get us resources in here from out of state and eastern part of North Carolina. I was having to tell them, right now, we're kind of on an island. We, we got, I, I can't even tell you if you could even get here right now. Ever means a way of getting in here. You told me early on that don't let this get out, but I'm in here by myself. You know, you remember that?
And I'll give kudos because some of the fire department staff were there alongside.
I'm sure.
Um, I was, I was the Monroe Fire Department, uh, Baker's Fire Department lead unit till about seven thirty.
Gotcha.
And we were in Greenwood Acres Drive, and if anybody's ever been up Greenwood Acres Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And the sheer number of hundred-year-old oak trees that are in that community, we rescued one family out of a home. Um, and I looked at those boys and I said, y'all have no idea where we are and it's pitch black and it's four thirty and the wind's blowing and the rain's driving. And just be glad you don't know where we are because I do and we need to leave.
Yes. Well, that's what I was getting at. I had to be hairy.
Got a call to go up on the upper loop. So luckily they had a truck with a turning radius, we were able to get up there. And then I told them, no, we're done.
Yeah.
Until daylight.
Yeah.
And the wind slows down and we can see what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
And I took them back to the station, changed clothes and started my shift here. Um, I sat on the bridge at the end of the runway at eight thirty in the morning. Trying to look and see, and my vehicle started to move and I looked at the edge of the bridge and the water's starting to wrap around the
Mm-hmm.
The bridge, but, and I'm like, self, you need to leave. Um, so I came back into Mills River and it wasn't very long after that, that, that section of the road shut down. Butler Bridge was shut down, North Rugby was shut down at the low spot in the dip. Haywood Road was shut down, couldn't get through there. Several places, well, uh, two eighty at, between Valley Ag and Ingalls eventually overflowed. And yes, we were on an island for a short period of time, for probably four or five hours until resources could cut their way through to us. The good thing we have here is DOT is down the road.
Yeah.
And they began immediately cutting their way out to communities, so they were able to at least get in here, but once you got there, you turn left to go down twenty-five Hendersonville Road. And there in Naples, the water was over the road and you couldn't get out there. Howard Gap Road was blocked in Fletcher due to the high water there at Fletcher Park. So that, they, I just went back to firehouse. They said, how is it out there? And I was like, you don't want to know.
Yeah, it takes, it takes a dedicated man to this community because if he turns and goes the other way, he's on the side his family's on. But he elected to come this way.
Yep.
Proud of you. It's hard, hard to do, I know.
Always was.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Any other questions? None? We appreciate each and every one of you. Yeah, and, uh, while they're getting up, you feel free to leave, guys. I know y'all been wore out and tired. Yep. All right, we'll move on with our presentation from our UDO consultant.
Uh, so just real quickly, I wanted to introduce Chad Meadows and Karen Mallow with Code Right Planners. As you know, we've executed a contract them, with them to develop the town's first unified development ordinance. Uh, this is our kickoff meeting with them tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Chad.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Yes.
I'm Chad Meadows with Code Right. It's my pleasure to be here. Um, we did schedule this meeting back in August, so, uh, but, you know, recovery is happening and, uh, and this is part of recovery. So I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. I'm going to take just a few minutes and tell you about the Unified Development Ordinance Update Project and our activities today. Uh, I'll talk about the team, the project objectives, our work program and some things that we discussed with the steering committee today. Uh, some things to, uh, to leave with you guys for, for thought in the coming days. Again, I'm Chad Meadows. I'm your project manager on the lead drafter. Joining me is Karen Mallow. She is also a, a code drafter and working on engagement. We're also joined by several other people, including folks from the McAdams Company, focusing on sustainability, stormwater infrastructure and, uh, some folks, uh, in Tidewater Associates Mapping. Uh, our project objectives, uh, the projects for the Unified Development Ordinance, again, this is a set of development regulations uh, that's going to govern subdivision, your zoning provisions, environmental protection. Um, a lot of the kind of problem areas that maybe have, have been, uh, reared their heads in the last couple of weeks. Uh, hopefully, you know, some adjustments to your development regulations will help stop these kinds of problems in the future. Series of objectives here, obviously protecting community character, uh, a code that's, that's user-friendly. Uh, remembering the importance of fiscal responsibility, having, you know, predictable development processes. Um, working better with the environment, working with water, working with the, with the environment that's here, uh, and incorporating innovation and flexibility uh, to, to produce some win-win solutions for not just the town, but also folks who own property and doing development in the community. Uh, we've got about an eighteen-month, uh, work program here. There are seven tasks, including this project initiation trip. We'll be back before you in December with our code diagnosis, basically a set of recommendations. Our suggestions about what should or could be done with your development regulations to address some of the concerns and challenges that are referenced in your land use policy guidance, uh, like making Mills River, Mills River goes, et cetera. So, um, that is our process. Uh, it's a very, uh, carefully managed, uh, effort. We will be focusing a lot on public engagement, public involvement, opportunities for people to participate, uh, in the project as much as they'd like to. Um, and multiple trips to Mills River to spend time with members in the community. So, uh, you'll see us at least six or seven times over the coming eighteen months. Um, and we would expect to enter the adoption process in January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, and perhaps be before you for a public hearing on the new zoning map and the new unified development ordinance in February of twenty-six. So that is our, our operational plan. Um, and we'll see, uh, if, hopefully we'll be able to meet that, uh, meet that schedule. We had, uh, first meeting with our steering committee today. That is a technical group of members from your planning board, from your board of adjustment, uh, and other technical folks are familiar with development. Here in the Mills River area, we asked a variety of questions about the rural residential rezoning process, project that's in, that's happening on the south side that you guys are considering uh, in the coming days and weeks. More discussion about your land use vision and the protection of community character. Uh, what's the right amount of commercial zoning that's appropriate for Mills River? Uh, is there some sort of centrus or, or, or locus for commercial development? Maybe that's the Ingalls area, maybe it's somewhere else, but, you know, protecting rural character, but also have, recognizing the need for jobs, the need for commercial development. Um, living with water, uh, the possibility of, uh, maybe adopting some floodplain regulations, uh, reviewing stormwater regulations, erosion control, uh, sedimentation, water supply watershed, et cetera. Um, discussion about housing. Um, should we be increasing the range of housing types? Um, should we allow housing in our commercial areas? Um, incentives for attainable housing, should we be addressing short-term rentals, uh, in a more comprehensive fashion? Questions about signage, et cetera. Um, incentives, um, are there things out there that we, we should be encouraging for better sustainability, better environmental support? What about recreation land? Should we be thinking about more parkland dedication, private common open space, greenways? What about our streets? Uh, you don't have very many, uh, municipal streets today, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you won't in the future. And how do we, how do we handle those? What's the best way for us to accommodate development? So these topics, many others, uh, we covered, uh, with your steering committee today. Um, are there any other issues that you guys can think of? Um, don't need an answer today, but in the coming days and weeks, if something occurs, uh, please share that with your staff. And that's something that we'd be happy to explore in greater depth, uh, for you guys as we move through this project. But, um, if there are any topics that come to mind that you'd like to be sure that we address as part of the development regulation process, please let me know or let staff know. In terms of, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, next steps, uh, obviously we're here to, before you this evening. Uh, we've got a series of stakeholder interviews, folks who are engaged in the development process or environmental protection or the community. Uh, those had intended to be taking place in person. It happened, but we are going to do these via, uh, phone, Zoom, remote, et cetera, uh, in the coming weeks. We'll be assembling a project webpage about the UDO project that'll have all of the information, places for people to pose questions, linked back to town's website, et cetera. Karen and I are conducting the plan and code review of your current regulations and policy guidance. And all of that information will be folded into this code diagnosis, this task two, that will be back before you in December to present. And that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Uh, how many of these, uh, for municipalities do y'all handle a year?
Well, that, that's a great question.
I mean, it's a long drawn out thing.
It is a long drawn out thing. It, it takes about, it, it takes at least a, a year for an easy, easy project. Uh, mid-range projects like this one are about eighteen months. The longer ones can take three or four years. So, um, right now we have four or five in process, um, these days. But, um, this is, uh, this is our twenty-ninth that, that Code Right has prepared. Um, and we've been doing this for, for many decades, so.
Okay.
Um, it's an, it's an area that we're very familiar with and we're very thankful to be working with you. You guys live in God's country and it's our pleasure to be able to come up here and enjoy, uh, this community. Um, you're, you're very lucky and blessed and, uh, we appreciate the chance to work with you.
Okay. I will say this, first time we met, of course, but just keep in mind, this is a farming atmosphere community for now. But another thing that we're seeing right now as we speak is our need to protect our watershed here. If we say ever need to be protected, we've learned in the last two or three weeks, not only are we providing water for Henderson County, but right now, the only water the city of Asheville's got, period, is coming out of this plant about a quarter mile behind you. So, you know, we're unique in that fact that you, you have to look at that a little deeper than normal, I think, here. Um, just keep that in mind, please.
Very good.
And I'm sure I'll think of a few other things, but that's, that's top priority right now because they's hundreds of thousands over there that'll drop the drink out of a spigot. And it's all bottles are brought to them, so this, we're one of their big resources and they're going to be leaning toward us pretty heavy as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I would say, remember we're rural.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we're not looking to be like some of the other surrounding places around here that don't look rural.
Yes, ma'am. We understand the reasons for being for, for Mills River, uh, and, uh, you know, y'all's desire to protect that agricultural and the rural character that you've established.
That'll be fine. Anything else? That's all we have, I think. Mr. Malchek, do you have anything to add? Okay.
Thank you very much. Look forward to, uh, having further discussion with you guys in the coming months.
All right, we're all pretty easy to get a hold of at some point in time during the day. If you need us, just let somebody know, we'll answer any questions.
I've heard, yeah, can come and see you face to face.
That's right. Exactly. Thank you. All right, uh, anybody need a break before we move on? Yep. All right, we're going to take a break. We'll be back here. We'll try to get back in just like five minutes to keep it rolling. Malchek, do you know who's going to be presenting for Brown Ridge?
Yeah. So yeah, we, we've had the conditional rezoning application under consideration from Brown Ridge, Northwood Raven. And tonight we have Kyle Whitaker from Northwood Raven and Jesse Swords from Allen Stall and Kilborn to do a informal presentation of the development concept.
Okay.
Mike told me I could sit, but I.
What if you want to?
Sure to stand.
Okay. No problem.
You know, I'm, I'm, I was surprised to be invited to this meeting so soon, but I'm happy to be here, you know, and, you know, just, just hearing the community response from, from everywhere, you know, from the smallest scale, my, the neighbors on my street to, you know, region wide is amazing. You know, sometimes it's hard for me to find the silver lining when, when bad things happen. This time it is front and center, you know? We all just found out how caring and, you know, generous our neighbors could be. So. And with that, I will turn to the Brown Ridge presentation. Again, my name is Jesse Swords, I'm an attorney with Allen Stall and Kilborn. I'm here with Kyle Whitaker from Northwood Raven is the development firm. We don't have the whole team here, but this, this project has a, a pretty big team and a very good team. We have David Coslet, who's a land use planner and a landscape architect with R V I. John Canard, he's a civil engineer with C D G Engineering. Alan Reed, traffic engineer with Impact Designs and Andrew Bryant, who's an architect with five oh five design. This, this project, in my experience, there has been a, a whole lot of really good thought put into this project, a whole lot of really good homework done to get it to where it is now. Much more than a typical project at this stage. And I think you'll see it, I don't plan to get into the details tonight, but you'll really see it in the details. But when those are presented. So I, I thought it's been about a year, a little more than a year since y'all passed the conditional zoning implementation. And we are the first application that I'm aware of. So I thought a little refresher on conditional zoning might be handy. I have some handouts.
Okay. If you don't care, make sure staff gets one or two.
Did I just hand something to my notes?
I don't, I don't.
Oh, no.
You got them?
That's alarmed. All right, so. I, I just have a quick kind of process overview for conditional zoning. And then the materials you have kind of elaborate on it. There are two blog posts from the school of government included in there. I reviewed a bunch of stuff from the school of government and I thought those two were kind of the most straightforward when it comes to the decision that y'all are called to make. There's, there's a lot of information out there and it's, you know, it's sometimes hard to sort it out, but I think these, these two really kind of boil it down to what, what y'all should be focused on with this. I included a couple of statutory sections, which I'll explain. And then I included the initial staff report to the planning board as well, which I think has a, a very good analysis of the project compared to the goals and policies set out in the comprehensive plan. So process overview starts with, I think we had a pre-application meeting. And then first step really is application submission and staff review. Staff checks for completeness. They also report on plan consistency and policy issues. So you'll see in the staff report, there's, there's some discussion of housing. And the consistency statement is where staff really pulls out, you know, specific sections of the comp plan as references. But the initial staff report, you know, recommended approval based on consist, consistency with the comp plan. Big elements for land use, housing in neighborhoods, community facilities and services and infrastructure and economic development. Staff did recommend some conditions which we have accepted, plan to accept. Those being a turn lane on Fang Field Road at Miles View, on the other side of highway from project and then a pedestrian connection out to Boylston. The next step is planning board review. And the planning board's role and according to North Carolina statute is to advise, and I'm quoting here, advise and comment on whether the proposed action is consistent with any comprehensive or land use plan that has been adopted and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. Now there, there are other powers that the planning board has, you know, there's a catchall in the statute that says, and anything else town council wants them to do. So. But their, their core functionality when it comes to rezoning, I, I always think of it as doing town councils homework, you know, and staff has done a great job of doing that homework as well. We did have three hearings in front of the planning board. We added some conditions during those hearings, including a double buffer on the Boylston Highway side and some additional non-required buffer between the project and the adjacent residential uses. And then it comes to y'all. So planning board gives their recommendation, it's advisory. In this case, they voted to recommend not approving this project. But it doesn't stop it from coming to you and it doesn't stop you from approving it if you want. Going along with the planning board recommendation, if you want, it's, it's your decision. And again, you know, take the planning board's work as, as homework and background, you know? Take staff's work as, as what it is, which is analysis, objective analysis of the project and the comprehensive plan goals. So I have a couple of, like I said, I have a couple of statute sections printed out and a couple of school government blog posts. Because conditional zoning is, is like a traditional rezoning in many respects. Zoning regulations in general, and I'm quoting from the statute, shall be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan. It shall be designed to promote the public health, safety and general welfare. And they should include reasonable consideration of, among other things, the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses. A view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land. And then I included the reasonableness factors, they're, they're in, they're discussed in one of the blog posts and they're also in one of the statutory sections I printed out. In the conditional zoning context, it's mainly the reasonableness they're talking about are the factors considered by a court when a, a court evaluates a spot zoning claim? Because a lot of conditional zonings everywhere are technically spot zoning. But there is illegal spot zoning and not illegal spot zoning. And the difference is whether it's, you know, reasonable according to these factors. So even if it is spot zoning, which most conditional zonings are, the reasonableness, you know, puts a guide on what's spot zoning and what's not. I also wanted to call out, and, and I didn't give you this whole statute section, but in one sixty D dash seven oh three B, discussing conditions and conditional zoning, it, it says, conditions and site-specific standards imposed in a conditional district shall be limited to those that, one, address conformance of the development and use of the site to local government ordinances. Two, addresses, you know, the development compared to plans adopted pursuant to one sixty D dash five oh one, so like the comprehensive plan. Or three, the impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the development or use of the site. So. This is a legislative board, elected legislative boards have legislative discretion. But it's important to note that where land use regulations are concerned, there's a lot of guidance for that discretion. And I, I think I picked out some good ones in the, in the blog posts and I'm, I'm happy to discuss anything anytime, you know, long after this is done. I, I'm a nerd about this stuff, happy to talk about it until you're so tired of me, you just tell me to go away. So with that, I have a few slides. So the main concern at planning board and, and if I recall correctly, that the reason stated for the, the negative recommendation was inconsistency with the current future land use designation, which is industrial unemployment. So I, I have a few slides that show the site here, it's outlined in red, which is a little bit hard to see, but that's the, the colors they give you on the Henderson County G I S. Sites outlined in red, this light green is technically Town of Fletcher, that's the golf course. And this orange obviously is Town of Mills River, M R thirty. That's the current zoning for the site. This is the future land use map in the Town of Mills River Comprehensive Plan. And I wanted to put it in context. So this is zoomed in on the site, you see it's industrial unemployment. I also went and pulled the Henderson County Future Land Use Plan, because they just redid their comprehensive plan. And I crudely in Microsoft Paint, superimposed the Town of Mills River Future Land Use Plan on the Henderson County. You can see that, actually maybe the last side slide has the legend on it, but this orange on the Henderson County plan is designated for light orange on the Mills River is residential. You know, the purple is right on the edge of town, right behind the Amazon warehouse. And it is, you know, it's adjacent to Boylston Highway, it's close to the airport, close to I twenty six. This is not your typical Mills River site. You know, one, one of the concerns people have about, you know, conditional zoning in general, this project in particular, we, we've heard from planning board members is opening the floodgates. You know, I, I think that concern is, is overblown specific to this site, because you know, it's a unique site, you know? A- anything else that comes along will be on, on a different, unique site, but it, it won't be, it won't have these attributes. It won't be right next to twenty six, it won't be right next to Boylston Highway. If Mills River is going to have, you know, dense residential development and, you know, dense in Mills River terms is very different from dense in, say, city of Asheville terms. But Mills River wants to have it, this is a great spot for it. And the site is very unique. So. The, like I said, the planning board voted to, to send a, a negative recommendation based on inconsistency with the future land use map. So I kind of wanted to talk about what a future land use map is and the U D O consultant that, that y'all have will also be able to explain this anytime, but the way I think of it is, you know, future land use maps are necessarily general in nature. They tend to be fewer than the number of actual zoning districts and, and, and difference in the actual zoning. And the general nature kind of reflects the uncertainty in predicting the future, you know? When, when it comes to the development of a town, you, you have to wait for someone to come along and be interested in, in building something. And you, you don't know exactly what that's going to be. So, so it's hard to say, we want this and nothing else on this piece of land. Because that, that causes the land to be vacant for decades potentially. And, and it reflects the reality that, you know, the study that goes into a comprehensive plan is never, can never be a hundred percent exhaustive or detailed. Variations in, in land that don't seem significant enough when you're at the thirty thousand foot view can become very significant when you are looking at a particular site. And, and that's, that's the case with this site, we heard a little bit from Mr. Brown about the hilly nature of it. It is, it's better suited to more smaller buildings than a giant building like the Amazon Warehouse. Just because of the variations in topography, there is, you know, floodplain on, on the site that can be protected much better with residential development than an industrial development and that sort of thing. you know, floodplain on, on the site, uh, that can be protected much better with residential development than an industrial development and that sort of thing. So when, when the town is coming up with a future land use plan, uh, and a comp plan in general, you know, the big questions are, you know, what is the best use of a piece of land? You know, uh, one of the basic planning principles is that you wanna use the town's land resources wisely. And obviously, the answer may be very different depending on whether you're looking at that wider area or the specific site. So with this site in mind, considering uh any kind of rezoning, uh, but this conditional rezoning in particular, you know, I think the questions are, you know, does residential use of this land present a good value proposition to the town? Is it a good use of the town's land resources? And is residential use of this land in line with the efficient and orderly development of the town? And why is this important? It's important to think about all these things, uh, because the government, uh, in this case, y'all, are deciding what a person can and can't do with their own land. The government, in some cases, is denying a person the freedom to use their own land as they see fit. And without the study and the reasoning and, you know, these principles to back up that kind of decision, you know, there, there's, there's no easy way to say that it, it simply violates fundamental American principles. To, to tell someone they can't use their land how they see fit without a good reason, you know? And that, that's what a comprehensive plan is designed to do, is to make that decision, you know, be grounded on facts, on study, on, on the town's values and the town's policies. So, I have the, the next slide is the, this is the Alta survey of the site, it's a little bit hard to see uh, on, on the screen, cause it's not quite big enough. Um, I also tilted it, so it'd be more kind of in line with the other representations that, you know, north-south wasn't quite right on, on the, on the sheet. So, you can zoom into this particular piece of land and ask those same questions. What is the best use of this piece of land? You know, does residential use here present a good value proposition to the town? You know, and is this in line with orderly development? Uh, and, you know, you get a very different answer when you're looking at this specific site. Uh, and we've heard some of the reasons for that. We'll go, we'll go into additional details, uh, when we have the engineers and the, the landscape architect here to really go into the, the nuances of it. But again, this is, you know, this is a, a very unique site on the edge of town, close to I-26, adjacent to Boylston Highway. You know, and like I mentioned earlier, the topo is better suited for many small buildings rather than a couple of gigantic buildings. Another goal that is, you know, it's consistent across jurisdictions. Everyone wants responsible, high-quality development, you know? I talked a little bit at the beginning about the team that I'm very proud to be a part of. Um, and I have uh Kyle here, um, that I thought I would ask to come up and, and just talk about, you know, some of the things that have been done uh, up to this point in the project, you know, some of the things uh Northwood Raven has done previously. And, and that sort of thing.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, like I just said, my name's Kyle Widdaker. Okay. Is there a, I can scroll up to go back? Okay, um, well, first and foremost, um, once again, Kyle Widdaker, Northwood Raven, I live in Durham, so have washed over the last few weeks, these places that I come to visit very frequently in the western part of the state, and it's just been absolutely heartbreaking to see, um, you know, I have, I grew up in Houston, so I have family. It's been impacted by um storms pretty significantly, so I understand what the community's dealing with and that long-term recovery, so. Excuse me, I, I will say, though, tonight, walking in and seeing smiling faces was really uplifting and seeing and hearing about their relief efforts was just a great sign for this community. That said, um, to talk about the Brown Ridge site quickly, um, as Jesse said, I'm not an engineer, I'm on our development team or an architect, so I will do my best to speak to that, but um, Northwood Raven, so we're a, uh, North Carolina-based company, we are headquartered in Charlotte, I sit in our office in the Raleigh-Durham area. Um, you know, we've been around since 2011 for 13 years, um, 14 years, no, 13 years now. Um, and over that time, we've grown and been successful with building over 50 projects, um, over 15,000 residential units in seven, now working on our eighth state. Um, and you know, I think what's unique about our company and what's led to a lot of that success is we have a, a very unique model and a unique, unique approach in that we really are one of the few owner-operators left on the development side, and I say owner-operator in that we hold our projects long-term, we're not the developer that comes in, builds the project that they build in every other jurisdiction, sells it and leaves town. You know, we have a, I sit on our development team, we have an, an internal design team that works on all of our projects, um, and helps guide that process. We have our own in-house general contracting team that builds our projects, and then at the end of the day, we have our own in-house property management team that, um, you know, operates our properties, maintains them and, and um looks after the property long-term. So we have a unique approach when we, when we start looking at projects, knowing that's our end goal, that we're gonna be holding on to this and on this, this, and creating this community long-term. So we really try to pay attention to all the details and we sweat a lot of details. Um, our CEO was an architect, so we were focused on every bit of that design, and I think, you know, you see a lot of that here, and I think some of that was reflected by some of the planning board members and their comments about the level of thought and detail that had gone into this. And, you know, as we look at a site, excuse me, like this, um, you know, we do a lot of different product types. This is not, as Jess, Jesse said, um, the site for four or five-story apartment development. Um, it's, it's not, we wanted to do a smaller development that fit in better with the community. Um, you know, as we looked at this site and what, and what you see, there's a, Jesse's hinted at it as well, there's a lot of topography. A lot of steep slopes down by the river, the power lines that run here, um, there's several streams that cut through here and come under Boylston Highway, um, back here. So as we looked at that, we said, "Look, we need to, to leave those as they are." So how do we work within this development as we started looking at the ordinance and the, the density allowances for, for multifamily development? It's four units per acre. So as we look at that, knowing these constraints, instead of trying to wipe those constraints off the board and, and spread it out, we said, "Let's try to work within that existing topography." Leave the streams in place, leave as much of that natural buffer that we can in place, that, that, those existing trees. Um, and really kind of cluster the development in a way that it feels like a, a community and a neighborhood. So we, we've got a couple of different product types, um, you can see, and I'll try to point to them. So some townhome style buildings, what you think of as more of a traditional townhome. We have a couple of different product types in this center area that we're, we're working through and, and planning that are townhome style, but they feel much more like a, like a single-family home, so you have your own sense of space um around them as opposed to being, sharing walls with your neighbors. Um, and then some, you know, we call them apartment buildings, but very low scale, we call them quads, so they have four, four units on a single floor plate and then two levels with a central corridor. And I'll, I'll flip to these images, cause I think, you know, it's, it's one thing to look at it from up above and look at the rectangles on the page, but it's hard to get a sense of what that means when you, you're actually walking down the street. So we've been working over the last few weeks with our architecture team, putting together some conceptual elevations to kind of show what that look and feel that we would be going for is like, and I, I think these do a great job of reflecting the very, this is a representation of each of those different product types. Um, and really focusing on the materials, the natural materials, the stone, the brick, doing pitched roofs, um, and keeping that scale lower. So this one in the center are those apartment buildings, as I said, with two stories, but doing a pitch roof, so it, it looks and feels like it fits with the other, um, buildings in the neighborhood. You have the two on the corners here, if you can see the mouse, are kind of the townhome product style, more traditional townhome, where you would share a wall with a neighbor, and then the opposite corners are kind of the, those more unique product types, trying to do a townhome-style product that feels more like a, like a single-family home, so you, you know, you share um, unoccupied spaces, you share garages, that sort of thing, but not having walls that are shared. So it feels much more like a, a, a traditional, lower-scale residential neighborhood. And once again, I probably did a really terrible job of explaining that, since, once again, I'm not a architect or land planner. But just trying to, to, to give a little bit of a sense of, of what that look and feel might be like and how we really wanna think about the design to make this a, a unique product that would, that would only really fit here. Turn it back.
Thanks, Kyle. You know, like I said, we have a great team that can really get into all the details, um, which is one reason, uh, I mean, the planning board asked for, uh, about a lot of details, that's one. So we were, you know, here for three nights and, and about five or six hours talking about the details. A couple of things on the high-quality, you know, responsible development topic that I wanna point out is, you know, a project like this actually, you know, enhances the goal, moves toward the goal of preserving natural lands in the Town of Mills River, balancing preservation of natural lands with, you know, the need for housing, things like that. Because, number one, this team is committed to keeping as much existing vegetation uh on the site as possible. And we heard about the streams, you know, but i- it also, the, the size of the site and the overall density limit, um, means that a- all of the area around, you know, the buildings shown here cannot be built on, you know? It protects that land from future development, from anyone, as long as that ordinance stays in place. And that, that land will be used for, you know, recreation, um, there, there are plans for trails and things like that, uh, obviously right next to the river. And another thing, another thing I wanted to point out is when you design and master plan a lot of units at once like this, it is very beneficial in terms of planning for traffic impacts and planning for stormwater impacts. Because it all gets planned at once, the traffic is, uh, the roads are gonna be big enough for everything that eventually gets built. The stormwater uh infrastructure is gonna be big enough for everything that eventually gets built. And compare that with, you know, more traditional, you know, a, a few units at a time, there, there are fewer stormwater controls, fewer requirements as far as traffic impact analysis, that sort of thing. So a, a lot of people balk at, at the size of, of some of these projects, but there's a benefit to that, you know? And, and the other thing is, I'm, I'm sure everyone has heard a lot about the need for housing in this area and for housing that's attainable, you know, by people who live here. And it takes a lot of units to meet that need, you know? It, it really is gonna take a balance of, you know, smaller residential development and larger projects like this, um, not, not one or the other. I also wanted to hit a couple of high points on, you know, the logistics, uh, you know, utilities for this site. Water is uh City of Asheville water, sewer is uh MSD. For the roads, the internal roads will be built and maintained by Northwood Raven, uh, and then for surrounding roads, we have already agreed to, you know, number one, construct a southbound turn lane on Fanning Fields at Mile, at Miles View Drive uh, within the existing road right-of-way. Um, two, provide a pedestrian sidewalk from the site to the Broadpoint Drive signal for future connection to the Mills River Valley Trail. And three, um, we'll also have to bring Miles View Drive up to fire safety standards. Um, fire uh will be addressed by uh Mills River Fire, law enforcement uh is Henderson County. And water is uh supplied by City of Asheville. So that, that's just what
That's where it's supplied from.
Yeah, it, part of the application process, we have to get what's called um allocations from uh the water and the sewer systems. Um, saying that there will be enough water for this project, there will be enough sewer capacity for this project. Um, we've also done a um traffic impact analysis, uh, to study the impacts on the roads and uh DOT has final say on, on what, uh, what improvements we have to make to nearby intersections in order to get a driveway permit. Also, I, I covered the open space a moment ago, um, and what I'm, what I'm getting at with this in kind of a high-level way is it's a unique site on the edge of town, kind of behind the Amazon Wayout Warehouse. A, a lot of the utilities um are, you know, supplied elsewhere or are, will be in charge, uh, will be undertaken by the, by the developers, such as the roads. I think it's a relatively low cost to the Town of Mills River. Um, and then on the flip side of that, currently, there are very few uh tax dollars being paid for this piece of property. Uh, and I, I have another handout, um, that kind of collects that information and also has you So what I've done here on the, on the top left is I, I collected the, you know, the PIN numbers, uh, you know, we're talking about the, the large main parcel. Um, there's the kind of an odd shape up next to Boylston Highway. There's the Miles View side and then there's tiny little sign lot that's right on Boylston. Um, the, the gray column, kind of right of center, shows the actual Henderson County uh assessment amount, you know? Uh, and the total assessment is, you know, $6.7 million. What's actually billed, however, because it's, uh, I assume it's in an agricultural kind of deference program? It's not really my area, but I, I think that's what's going on. The total billed assessment is $710,000. Um, so the taxes to Henderson County and Town of Mills River total $3,500, you know, and 500, almost 500 of that comes to the Town of Mills River. Below that, I have um applied the tax rates to some hypothetical valuations for a, a project of this size. So, um, 20 million, 30 million, 40 million and 50 million. And and, you know, I, I broke out the taxes, Mills River and Henderson County, and then, of course, you have the totals there. For y'all, because, uh, you know, obviously, one of the things you're concerned with is making sure the town's balance sheets work. Attribute a lot to the town, um, in many ways, at, at a relatively low cost to the town and in a unique location, uh, where are, are lessened, you know, by the fact that it's way on the edge of town, next to the airport, next to the Am- But one of the, one of the reasons, you know, we are here tonight is you have a, a lot of say, you, you get a lot of input, uh, and we wanna, you know, this team uh, has, has worked with staff, worked with planning board on, you know, some, some concerns, you know, and, and has done some good work on that, and, you know, we intend to do the same thing with town council. Um, so if, if anyone has any thoughts to share at this time, uh, I would very much appreciate it. Or any question- Or any questions you can have.
Questions or comments? About what you. So James, you don't go? So one, one question I have that I would have never thought of before going three or four weeks ago is did any of this area where these homes are going to be sitting, was they underwater? Have y'all been able to evaluate that yet? I mean, I understand you probably haven't been able to evaluate that yet.
So the, the engineers would definitely know. Do you know the answer?
Uh, I've, uh, I asked this question to Mr. Malachek earlier. Mr. Malachek, do you have a response?
Just due to, due to the topography and the height of that hill. Um, and again, I've not gone out and confirmed it, but based on the flood elevation of the river would not have reached the top of that hill. And even if you zoom into the topographical survey, you can see that.
Okay, that helps that.
I was actually there on either Friday afternoon or Saturday morning and, uh, the, the water didn't come anywhere near the top of the hill.
Okay. Okay, so, um, my next question is, is, you know, sitting in my seat here, I could foresee us getting some of y'all's teams residents, if it was built, coming here with the noise from Amazon. I mean, I know we're talking about buffers. I know we're talking about all that, but we get them just on the Ingalls dumpster of the morning. I mean, we, in lights and stuff. I mean, we're going to get those. So if this moved forward, I would want to make sure we put every measure possible to prevent any of that. Cause you know, I mean, you see how long these meetings go anyway, but we're here to help the people. So when they come and they got a concern about, you know, I got a light from Amazon coming in my window. You know, if we can prevent those early on, if it comes to tuition is built, I just want to make sure we got everything accounted for early, you know? Maybe even if it's putting a window somewhere different in architectural part of it, knowing that we go over and take a visual where everything's at now, that probably not going to get moved because it's already there. Um, but the noise will be the biggest thing.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that just a little bit. Um, and Kyle may have some additional things and our landscape architect would have more. Um, but one of the things about this site is it does, um, the team was able to work with it in a way that, that, uh, will do a lot with the natural vegetation and with the top, topography, you know, to shield, uh, the residents from Amazon. Um, I also, you know, residents moving to Amazon rather than Amazon cropping up next to residents, um, I would think would lead to fewer complaints. Um, but, but the team has, uh, the team has thought about that and, and the site, uh, works well with it, even with proximity.
I, I can just add to that because I will say, you know, as we first started looking at the site, that was one of our first questions. It's how do we work with that? Because we've looked at sites in the past where it hasn't worked out because you couldn't situate the site and orient banks to, to minimize that noise. So we tried to be very intentional about leaving those natural buffers there to minimize that. We'll also look at things like how you orient the houses or homes that, that face that side get, you know, STC rated windows and have higher acoustical ratings to, to minimize those sort of things. Cause we obviously don't want our residents being upset about those same things.
Sure.
And the airport has been considered two, uh, flight paths and that, that sort of thing. Uh, and, and other, you know, airport related things like the stormwater, um, takes into account that the airport doesn't want, um, standing ponds, you know, for birds to.
Because they had come to us before and told us that they didn't want retention ponds because it draws water foul that might be sucked into engines. But I've heard of retention ponds and I thought, you know, well, did the airport decide to waive that or, you know, where they at?
So we just need to make sure that's is addressed. And if you come back to us on a public hearing that we have that, uh, signed off on at some point.
Uh, signed, signed off from.
By the airport.
Yeah, I, I don't, so John Kennard, the civil engineer is the one who will know about all that. Um, and I believe he has talked to the airport.
I'll see what else I was thinking.
On the, on the hill, the top of the hill, are you planning on dozing off into the flood plain and making it wider?
Um, I don't know the exact topography, but we don't plan to impact the flood plain. That flood plain is down by the river. Um, we wouldn't impact that. The, the piece of the, the top that would come down would just get used to kind of balance out some of those lower areas in the middle, but we wouldn't touch the flood plain.
So you're not tentatively planning on taking dirt out of there or bringing dirt in?
We're a little early to know kind of the import export numbers. Um, but the, once again, the intent would not be to impact the flood plain. It would be use as much as we can to balance things on site.
Yeah, the engineers are always trying to balance the site, um, because that's the best way to do it, cheapest way to do it.
I would, uh, encourage y'all in the planning process to go down here and take note of our trails along the river. Because everything, if it comes to tuition, would have to be bolted down, hard mounted, or it's going to belong to somebody on downstream. Uh, we've learned the hard way two or three times before we started bolting our stuff down. But, uh, and keep in mind is y'all being the owners that that cleanup, we're going to hear about that cleanup potentially. If you guys don't jump on that situation, I don't know y'all before a few meetings that I've seen, you know, they're going, the citizens over there is going to come right here and say, you know, we had a flood and we're renters, right? They're going to be renting. And y'all's just cleaned up. When's my guys coming? So I just want to make sure that that's addressed. And we get some kind of guarantee if this was the past, that y'all are going to step up the plate. You know, snow conditions, uh, trees come down. We're leaving the trees. So they're going, you know, they're going to get wore out the next time it comes through like everybody else has did here. So, and potentially think about, you know, we, we're thinking outside the box now. Few weeks ago, I'd never thought about this, but if y'all get forty people displaced, have y'all got other places to put them or, or are they just going to, you know, it's a different situation if they're not the owner, if y'all are renting responsible for that.
Yeah, and that's one of the benefits of, of, of having an owner that is a long-term holder of the project that, that builds the project and manages the project long-term. You know, they're invested in the project. Uh, they're invested in keeping their residents happy. Um, they, they have those obligations, those maintenance, maintenance obligations.
Yeah, that's right. And the other thing I was going to add, I mean, we're very unfortunately used to that. We have several properties in Florida. We see that in Tampa that just recently got hit with Milton and Orlando. So we, we deal with that, making sure those properties are ready before anything comes. The cleanup effort afterwards, and then in, in the rare occasion where we have had to displace residents, we've been able to, you know, help them out and move them to either another property or, or find somewhere else to help them out.
So how long have you been with them, Mr. Twitter?
I, twelve years.
Twelve years. And you're a local attorney in their behalf. So in the twelve years, do you know of any of these that they have sold off? Have they sold any? And if they have, for what reason did they elect to sell them to, just to build new or?
Yeah, we, over the course of the twelve years I've been with the company, of the fifty plus projects, I think we've sold three or four.
Was they older?
They were, yeah, they were older.
Well, see that, I mean.
Ten, ten years. So then we, we would sell them to them.
Well, see, that's my, that's my issue as mayor now. I won't be mayor twenty-five years from now, but my concern here would be, you know, we get this big fine nice stuff, but we all know, and I'm not beating on renters. But, you know, y'all may take care of it real good till it comes to a point to where this thing kind of is getting, it's costing you more than, than it could possibly bring in. I'm a realist and a builder. But what I don't want us to create here, and, and I'll need some, I, if this comes to a public hearing, I'm going to need some proof of this. That these things are going to be built a little bit better than normal. They're going to be at least a seventy-five year home for someone, even if they're sold to a different entity. Because I just don't want us to create a slum area that another mayor in the future that's going to have to police and take care of. That's when, right now, it's not a big cost to the town. I'll agree to that. And it's some revenue coming to the town and the county. But fifty years from now, I don't want it to be something where I've got to have five Mr. Players just to control that side of town. That's my concern. And y'all can control that a lot now by ensuring us if it's going to get built. The qualities and, and everything that we need to see now to kind of feel a little bit better about stepping into this situation. Okay?
No, and, and that's fair. And I, I'll, I'll just add to that, you know, I mean, I think we, we do have our own general contracting group, which I actually used to work on. Um, and we do take a lot of pride in making sure we build to those highest quality standards because I say we're long-term holders, right? We're long-term holders in the real estate industry. There's a lot of real estate developers that their, their outlook period is two, maybe three years. For us, it's, it's ten. That's a different level.
Oh, it is.
Um, and, and because we also manage them, we also see the backend of it. If you, if you build a poor quality product, you pay for it on the backend as you're operating it. So that, that's not part of our business model and never has been.
Okay, thank you.
What do you consider your range of rents to be?
Um, on a project like this, it, it, it would vary. I don't have exact rent figures. Um, because we're still working on kind of the unit designs and we put together the conceptual elevations and that sort of thing. We, a, as I had mentioned at planning board, as we did our initial underwriting, our kind of, we look at it as an average rent right now based on square footage, and that was a dollar, sixty, dollar sixty-five in that range across all the various product types. Um, so it kind of varies between each.
Anything else? Does staff any, have any questions for them at this point? Well, okay. Anything else you got for me?
Uh, no, I was just making some notes.
Okay. If we think anything else, we'll get staff to forward them to you that we might like to see.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, it's a legislative decision. Y'all can communicate with us directly or you can communicate, uh, through whichever town staff member, uh, you prefer. We, you know, we love to get your comments, um, so that we can do our homework on them and, and then.
And we appreciate that very much. We noticed that in the planning board meetings that we was able to attend or watch via Zoom. Y'all, y'all brought the answers back.
Yeah. And we strive to do it. So here I just have a thank you slide and, and with that, uh, I think I'm done.
Thank you. Y'all have a safe trip home. Be careful. All right, uh, moving on to tax collector report.
So in your packet is the, um, twenty twenty-four property tax collection report for September.
We'll get to it in a minute.
At the end of September, um, we had collected four hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents for the month of September. Um, you can see that we had adjustments of a increase in the levy of a little over fifty-nine thousand dollars. That was from the utility billing. We get those values from the North Carolina Department of Revenues generally sometime in September. So that increased, um, increased the levy. We collected the four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, so the year to date at the end of September was a little over eight hundred and one thousand dollars. And our balance to collect is a little over three million.
Wow.
Yep. Collected some from previous years, just coming in, always, always trying to get back taxes paid too. Do you have any questions?
I would just like to make a brief mention of point levity is the, uh, we opened up town hall, I believe last Tuesday. Uh, and I believe we had our first, uh, person coming in to pay their tax bill, I believe on Wednesday. So to say that, that, that Mills River residents are dedicated to ensuring that their taxes are, uh, property taxes are paid. I don't know what better sign there was than at that time.
The lady walked up to the door and said, I'm, I'm sorry, this insta, this installment is late. She was paying on the installment plan. It was due the first, you know, so she was here like the third or something. Um, she went to put it in the drop box and I said, I'll, I'll just take that. She said, but it's a tax payment. I said, well, I'm the tax collector. I, you know, it, it's safe.
It's allowed.
I got my yellow vest on, but.
No, I didn't have my badge on that day or something. I don't know. So, yeah.
Is that all you have? Any questions for our lead? Here none? We'll move on. Uh, our financial dashboard.
First, I'd like to apologize. The, uh, dashboard that was in your packets, um, I was preparing for this meeting and realized there were a few mistakes. I wasn't as quite as finished as I thought I was when you got it. So you have a new one. Um, the larger, maybe easier to see.
Much.
Um, um, your revenues, um, are strong. Um, we're at the end of the first quarter. Um, there's a few things that are a little bit behind, but, um, I have no, I'm not worried about property tax, um, catching up. Your, um, interest on investments so far are still strong, though interest rates are dropping just a little. Your permits and fees are eighty-one percent of their budget at the end of the first quarter, which I think is a testament to how busy your planning and zoning department has been in, in the last three months. Parks and recreation fees are already at forty-eight percent at, um, the end of the first quarter, which again, shows how busy they have been with all the programs that they've set up. And, and keeping the community busy. Your transfer from fund balance, the one in red, that budget is to account for, um, capital reserves and farmland preservation. Your expenses, um, information technology is at forty-four percent. That's because, um, that includes maintenance contracts on all of our software. Those are mostly paid in the first quarter. Capital reserves and outlay, um, reflects, um, that we have um, allotted for our capital reserves and your, um, we've spent about eleven thousand dollars on, um, the playground access, uh, project, which if you have any questions about that, that would be for Nicole. Um, your fund balance percentage, it looks really healthy at a hundred and four percent of your budget. Now, what this doesn't reflect is that October second, we pulled three hundred thousand into our operating budget, um, so that we could start paying some bills. And we have, we have spent almost none of what we've allocated for capital projects yet. So, um, it, it's, it's almost skewed because of what we haven't done. Fund balance commitments, um, particularly in lieu of repairs to the park, et cetera, that are coming up. I thought you'd be interested. Right now, that's, um, uncommitted fund balances four million, four point one million. Powell bill, um, is your dark blue on that graph. We've gotten our first trench for the year. We get that in two tranches. That was ninety-six, just over ninety-six thousand dollars. So right now we have saved five hundred and eighty-six thousand, um, some of which will be used for that playground access grant. Just so you know, we are, are accounting for that land preservation, those funds that we're hopefully spending later in this year. And, um, your, your graphs at the top, your operating budget, your capital budget, the capital budget, it, it looks a little funny, but that's just because it, we've not spent any of our capital funds yet. Questions?
Uh, back during budgeting, we was suspecting that the sales tax might go flat where we have been increasing. What can you tell me, uh, that looks like at this point after the first quarter?
We, we were told to expect it to remain flat.
Yeah.
We have in the last two months received more funds than we've ever received. we have in the last two months received more funds than we've ever received in one month ever in in the history of the town. So how that's going to even out over the year, I don't know. Um.
Do you get those reports monthly or quarterly?
I I get a funds notification that they're about to transfer money to us monthly.
Monthly.
Yes.
So I would be curious to see how this two-week affects it. So kind of keep an eye on that for us and let it pop.
The funds we're receiving are more or less three months behind.
Okay.
So that will take a few months.
Okay.
For us to see. Um, yes, there are natural progressions, you know, um, right after Christmas, it goes up. Um, and right around Christmas, um, there's usually a slump in February and March because people have spent all their money at Christmas. So um, there will be trends and I'll, I will try to remember to update you on that.
See how this affects.
Yeah.
If I may, just a couple of points.
Sure.
The uh, draw your attention to the right side under revenues. You'll see sales tax revenues. Uh, the actual Q one total was five hundred, approximately five hundred and fifty thousand. Related to the FY twenty-four Q one was about four hundred and ninety thousand. So there's about a fifty-eight thousand dollar difference or so between the two of those. So that relates to uh, what uh, what our finance director Sue was just mentioning, um, that there was more than predicted, however projected. But however, again, based off the circumstances here, also with the economy as a whole, uh, it's still a a conservative uh estimate to be able to uh expect some type of flattening over time. Um, but we're going to continue to monitor that to see whether or not it comes through uh, comes to fruition. The other thing I wanted to mention, as as she mentioned as well, is that this is as of September thirtieth, and obviously, as we've talked about uh quite a bit tonight, there was an event that happened right at the end of September into October. And so right now, we're in the process of working through what those expenses are going to be. And for a reminder for those in the audience and those at home as well, uh, a fund balance and a healthy fund balance is designed to help you in cases of emergency. And I don't know what qualifies more of a case of emergency than what we've gone through. But that being said, being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar is also first in uh, front of mind and first and foremost in our conversations. And so if there are decisions that need to be made in order to ensure that the town uh continues to rebuild back to where it was and and um previously to this, uh, we are, we have already started our own public assistance grant program through FEMA. I've already started that conversation and we're going to have representatives here as well. So there may be expenses that come through that may uh have to pull from those, that uh uncommitted fund balance at one point. But my goal uh is to make sure that we follow every procurement and federal, state, and local requirement in order to get the biggest refund back to this town as possible. So uh, as we, as we move forward through this, I just want to let you know that those may be coming your way. Um, but we are being mindful of what we're spending and making sure that we get reimbursed for what is uh, what we are able to be reimbursed for.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you got, Sue?
Um, yes, um, other than um, I'm not sure if the entire council is aware that at one point we thought we were going to have to spend the little cash we have on hand. Um, but we did not have to. Uh, this is another testament to the people of Mills River. Um, our our staff would go to a store, um, have a credit card in their pocket and cash, and they would write down all the credit card information so they could run it later and trust us, which is, I think, fantastic.
It is.
Sue, remind me again what we can use Powell Bill money for?
Powell Bill money is, um, and it's might maybe better equipped for this, but um, streets, sidewalks. Um.
So that, so nothing, we really didn't have anything damaged in here as far as road. The walking trail, is that really why? Near the river, maybe?
And and we had planned to use some of those funds um towards the playground access um, but uh, project. And it was, if I remember, I, you correct me, um, it's basically for the sidewalks.
Curbs and sidewalks of that project that could be used for.
Okay. All right, moving on, uh, consideration of public hearing for R twenty-four oh one Brown Ridge Conditional Resoning.
Yes, sir. So uh, I'll jump in on this one and then uh I'll turn it over to Mr. Malacheck as well. And so, um, as you, as we've discussed, uh, there was a presentation that obviously earlier, just a few minutes ago regarding uh the applicant for Brown Ridge Conditional Resoning. And this is, this item is actually for council to consider whether or not uh the the time is an opportunity to set that public hearing, which would be the next uh step in the process uh to, in order to uh move this item forward. Uh, from my understanding, I'm going to look at Mr. Malacheck as well to keep me in check here, is now you have, you have two options. You have the option to uh, you know, move forward with setting a date for a public hearing or for tabling uh to a, to a later date uh and then uh and then taking it up at that time. So those are the two uh main considerations that are, that are before you. Mr. Malacheck, am I speaking correctly?
That's correct, and we've not even uh suggested a specific date. Uh, we've just stated that we can meet public notice requirements if the hearing is held no earlier than November four.
Yes, that's correct. So that we have created that that timeline for you all to consider, which again would be potentially, I believe, November fourteenth would be the next meeting, uh, regular scheduled meeting uh of council. It's the only meeting in November, uh, and then there is one meeting in December. And then we'll be into the uh, and then we'll be into uh calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Okay. So I will be out of town on the fourteenth. And I know Shay is stepping aside, so. You know, and I definitely don't want to sidestep, but I'd want to be here for it. They, they paid for their their fees, their conditional zoning fees and all, so they need to be heard in a public hearing format. So uh, we just got to figure out when we want to do it. When can we do it? And and I think that meeting could be held in here, no problem. This, you know.
Understood. Yes. So, so if that is the case, that the um the, the next regular scheduled meeting, as I mentioned, it's in December. During that meeting, uh, that is when a, the new council is also sworn in in December, uh, because it'll be the first uh meeting after uh, in December after the election. And so that's the, currently the major item on there. If there is a will of council to uh schedule a special meeting around this public hearing as well, um, then uh, then we are more than have, more than able to make that accommodation as well. So, but it would again have to be after November, November four.
Okay. James, Andrew. That we.
The next meeting is Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, the fourteenth and then the following one's Thanksgiving.
So like one meeting in November, one meeting in December.
Hmm, leave it up to you guys. I can make it anytime that I'm here.
Now, we've got a public hearing on the twenty-fourth of October. Right?
Yes, unfortunately, we would not be able to have this public hearing at that time. It would not meet the public notice requirements.
Yeah.
So it would have to be after November four.
So basically what we're saying is we're either going to have to have a special one or it's going to get pushed all the way out to the uh first one in December, which the new council members would, or I would say new the sworn in would take place, then the public hearing would happen after that.
I would recommend it because this council has heard everything already that you dealt with it, you deal with it before you swear in your new members. Of course, it's up to the board's choice.
I see what you're saying.
And and just for councils, uh, and for the public, that's also a Thursday. That would be the week before, the Thursday before the scheduled November meeting. But we would still continue to have on the fourteenth as well.
Up to you guys. I would presume Jeff will be here. I mean, we just got to go with what we go.
Yeah, as of this moment, I have no information uh regarding council member Young.
You do seven, November seventh.
I can make it work.
Make it work, okay. All right. Give them all.
Correct.
Not putting hardship on you, is it?
Nope.
Okay. I've asked enough of you last two weeks. I know he is.
At six thirty?
Might as well. That's about as early as I can get here, honestly. So you need a motion on that, so. I see what you're saying. Uh, one of you will make that motion. The other one's second.
Okay, um, I'm making the motion to set the public hearing for R twenty-four oh one, the Brown Ridge Conditional Resoning for November the seventh at six thirty.
Okay. I've got a motion. How about a second? Any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? Okay. So somebody let them know we're going to be hearing them again November seventh. Oh. All right, uh, gee, discussion and consideration of the MOU for Henderson County Public School.
Yeah, so uh, our Parks and Rec Director Nicole Swett is going to uh uh bring us up to date on this MOU.
Yeah, so um the town of Mills River has had an MOU with Henderson County Public Schools since uh twenty twenty-one, uh, which basically states, um, we can use their facilities um at no charge and they can use ours. Um, and that they have priorities and we have priorities over other uses. Um, back this spring, council had asked me to look into um, one of the primary uses that Henderson County Public Schools uses our facility is for rugby, middle school, baseball, which they hold here on our baseball field. Um, and they have had some issues uh getting enough funds to pay their officials. And most of their other sports, um, they're able to charge an entry fee, but because of our park rules, it says you cannot um basically take money on town property without permission of council. Um, they were hoping that we could get that um changed in the MOU. And so that was uh brought up during a council meeting and uh council has directed me to to look into that with our town attorney. And so that's what is reflected in this MOU that it basically, one of the, there's a big change. Read the um condition here is basically at Henderson County Public Schools shall have the right to charge entry, entrance fees to the public for attendance at H C P S athletic and recreational programs and events held on Mills River par- property as long as such fees are the same as those charged for similar events held by H C P S on its property. The general public visiting Mills River facility will not be charged, only individuals that visit the Mills River facility with sole purpose of attending the Henderson County Public School event. Essentially, you know, if you come to use the playground, you're not going to be charged. Even if you were um, come to use the playground and use kids like, oh, they're playing a baseball game and they want to go and watch for a few minutes. Um, but essentially, that is the the big change in this MOU. We have had a great relationship with the schools. Um, as I said, we use their tennis courts just this week. Uh, when we couldn't hold our programs, um, we're using their uh gym auditorium for our public hearing coming up in a couple of weeks. Um, we've had a couple of special events over at Mills River Elementary. So it's been a, a good partnership with uh, for us, um, and one we'd like to continue. And um, so if if council wishes, um, making this this change and a re-provise MOU would help them be able to raise the money for their sports teams and to be able to better pay their officials. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
If, if I may, I'm so sorry. One, one final, one final point. This is only for Henderson County Public Schools, not other affiliates that may also use Henderson County Public Schools also coming here. Is that correct? It's only for the entity.
This is only with Henderson County Public Schools. So there has to be a Henderson County Public School.
I knew that there were some questions about that, so I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
So a couple of questions. Would they be, they will bring their own person to collect the money?
Mm-hmm.
Would you foresee it just taking place right there for that particular baseball field or if they wants to have a tennis event here? Not, probably not down that way?
No, it would be right at that facility. And in reality, they do most of their ticket sales, not even at the gate.
Okay.
They sell it.
And I have like a, I have a patsy's pass bracelet, but.
Um, that they can charge and that those out of town, so but essentially visiting teams is who they would, mostly those parents.
I see.
They'll be, one of the moms will end up having volunteer with table and tickets and.
Right, they wouldn't be at the front gate saying, are you here for the baseball game? You need to pay. It would be very localized just to.
At the sidewalk, at the doghouse.
Right, that specific facility.
So any need for law enforcement since there's money to exchange in hand?
We already require that they have their own enforcement.
That's the other thing they're having to pay. They're having to pay umpires, which is like ninety bucks per umpire. So it's like a hundred and eighty bucks a game that they're paying umpires and they're having to pay for this, the law enforcement.
Okay.
So it's costing that for those three people at every game. So there, it's killing the baseball team.
Okay, got you. Hey, any more questions? Questions, questions, questions?
And I think students is too, I think.
Okay. Anything? Uh, entertain a motion to approve this uh.
Um, I will make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten and the MOU with Henderson County Public Schools as written, authorizing the town manager to sign.
Uh, I got a motion. How about a second? Same. Uh, any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hey. So, moving on to H, uh, denial of R twenty-four oh three, statement exists. Let's see, you're helping us with that one.
Yeah, so at the September twelfth meeting, council uh decided to unanimously vote to deny R twenty-four oh three. This was the Brandy Branch Road property looking to go from light industrial to mixed views. And again, state law basically mandates that the governing board must approve a statement describing whether any rezoning actions consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then when adopting or rejecting any zoning map amendment, whether it's reasonable and in the public interest, you heard uh the Brown Ridge applicant talking about those reasonableness standards. Um, so staff has basically attached a draft statement of consistency and reasonableness that supports council's decision. So just to clean up the paperwork and protect us from any legal challenge, um, staff asked that we adopt those uh tonight and it can be done in a single motion.
Okay.
And if I may, there are, under item H within this provides the uh, the written language that would be necessary for us to adopt um, moving forward.
Okay. Got you. Any more questions, discussion on this? Everybody understands why we're here and how we got here? Uh, since it was a denial, we is kind of torn between, did we have to do it since it was a denial versus if it passed, correct?
Yeah, there, there was a question asked and I think we were just moving quickly through the agenda, so.
So you need, you need help for these?
That's correct. Um, yes, you, you can make it as one motion if you want, or you can follow the green text, yeah.
But one motion now, just to read both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Other. Um, I make a motion that uh, Mills River Town Council finds that proposed zoning map amendment R dash twenty-four dash oh three is not consistent with the town's making Mills River twenty forty comprehensive plan and future land use vision map and adopt the statement of consistency as presented. I also make a motion that the town council finds that proposed zoning map amendment R twenty-four dash oh three is not reasonable and is not in the public interest and adopt the statement of reasonableness as presented.
Okay, I have the motion. Motion's read. Uh, second. Uh, any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, moving on along now. Uh, reappointment of board to Board of Adjustment terms in November eighteen, twenty twenty-four.
You have two members um on the Board of Adjustment whose term is going to expire in November and um. and they are both willing to continue to serve, Mr. Jeff Moore and Mr. Jim Foster.
Any discussion?
They have no applications on file for that board.
Okay. I am going to take this time as a mayor of Mills River to say that all my advisory boards, be it planning or zoning, and my Board of Adjustments, which makes great, great decisions for our town. You have to understand your place on these boards, and I hope everyone's listening. There seems to be some people taking it to use it as a political platform, and that's not the place for it here. You got freedom of speech, use it how you will. I'm not a lawyer. But I'm telling you as a mayor, if you want to stay on these boards, I feel like this council right here should police that with who they put on here. And I think each and every one that's out there that's doing it knows who they are. And I hope and pray that they get a little sense about it. And I want our boards to be Mills River boards, be strong, be respectful, and please leave the political part out of it. That's all I got to say about that. And in saying that, we'll get back to any more discussions or questions here as to what we're going to do with this.
Just for one more point of clarification here, you have the ability to appoint them separately based off the forms that are in front of you. Uh, as well as tabling any items that you would so choose. So both languages are, both language options are available for you as a part of the discussion if you so choose.
Got you. And I will say that as I look here, I realize that both of these are potential council candidates. So in reappointing them, be careful as to not show any favoritism with this election coming up, because we still have time to appoint after this November between the election and the eighteenth. And I think as this council, that would be a smart, wise thing to do. But I'll leave it up to y'all to make motions as y'all see fit, and if they get seconds, we will go to vote on it. But I'm just stating the mayor's position here. That's all I'm doing. There'll be a meeting on the fourteenth.
Is there anything coming before the Board of Adjustment that, that have a meeting? Okay.
I would be okay with waiting until after the election. Election's on the fourth and then we have a meeting on the fourteenth. Yeah.
Because if either or both are elected, they can't serve, serve on the Board of Adjustment anyway, correct? And they'll have to advertise it.
Yeah.
And you'll have to cancel your meeting in December. We can wait, I'm fine.
Okay, all right. So I need a motion to, would we call this table it to, okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the re, Board Adjustment reappointments, both of them, to the November fourteenth meeting.
Okay, so second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any more discussion on these reappointments? Hear none? All?
I would like to say that I'm okay with tabling it, but both applicants have done a fantastic job on the boards. They've been here, they've brought a lot of discussion and information to the boards, and I appreciate y'all being on the boards. And I appreciate you running for, to get up here too.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, so any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? Um, moving on to other business.
Mayor and council, one, a point of clarification from earlier. When you moved to set the public hearing by motion for November seventh, we also need to make, I would ask council, if you're willing, to make a motion to set a special meeting on November seventh, so then that public hearing can have that special meeting designation.
Somebody make us that motion. They have a special meeting.
I'll make a motion that we have a special meeting on November seventh at six thirty.
I got a motion. How about a second?
Second.
Second, Jane. All, any more discussion on the meeting? Hear none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? Okay, y'all caught up? Other business? Have we created any other business? Hear none? Everybody's ready to go home and eat something?
Motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Shay, second?
Second.
I don't think there's many. Listen, all in favor, aye?